Do we have a second?
Yes, sorry.
Pledge allegiance.
In the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any board and committee reports, Eric? There's new people in the audience, Eric, and maybe they do not recognize you, so introduce yourself.
I'll speak to them as well.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Eric Swan. I live at 14 Old Farm Way. I'm chairman of the municipal building committee. For those that don't know me, I'm also on the zoning board of appeals. I was also on the public safety complex committee previous before the municipal building committee. So here we are today. We're moving towards the holidays, and our focus is on the charge that you've given us to assess a project here at town hall, which involves a town hall and a police station, and compare that to the previous public safety complex, which was a police station and a fire station on the adjacent protection fire company number two's property. So currently, what we have, what we've been doing is we've updated the town hall program, spaces, of rooms, of number of people using the rooms, and the size of the rooms. We've updated that for the police department. We're going to update the conceptual plans that were previously done. So there's a little bit of work, but not too much work there, and we are going to get bigger site plans, because they were quite small in the past plans, so people can understand what, what the, how the projects.
People were taking measurements of all the individual spaces.
Yes, yes. So we, we had, we had that done. We got to a certain point. We used what CSS had. Now we've gone back and we've re-verified information to make sure we're current. We're going to get the plans updated. The, each site plan will include the fire company. There is thought that eventually something might happen down there, so it's not to be short-sighted. We're going to show the project here on this site, which was the directive that we have, but we're also going to have some forward thinking with the plans that we're showing. It's not that we're including or designing or including the fire company in the budgets that we're showing, but we are going to show some dash lines that show how this site will have future value if, if that should come to fruition. With that, we'll also have two options. One is the new, new building here. One is the, and the second one will be renovations to town hall with a police station addition. That is already done and part of that past report. It will be brought forward, and previously that was passed on because it was slightly more expensive. So why would you pay a little bit more for the renovation addition when you can do a new building that would have more value going forward? So we're going to do that. And with those plans, then we're going to go out to get a third-party estimate, a separate person to do a construction cost. Once we have that construction cost, we'll have a, a cost assessment by CSS architects, and then the municipal building committee will take those costs and put them back into our total project costs, costs for OPMs, costs for other consultants, costs for legal fees, for printing fees, et cetera, et cetera, which make a total project cost. And we hope to have that by early January in order to start plugging into budgets and to give to the finance committee and the capital planning committee so that they can do their thing with tax assessments. So in Massachusetts, there's several laws that govern the procurement of design services and the procurement for construction services. Chapter seven C is the procurement, and chapter 149 A. And there's a lot of stuff in those different laws, but basically, they have thresholds, and at a million and a half project, it states that you need to hire an OPM, an owner's project manager, in order to be brought on board, and that owner's project manager needs to be brought on board before you select the designer. And when you say designer, you mean architect and mechanical engineers and electrical engineers and other associated consultants with the project. So the, a lot of people have different thoughts when they hear OPM, depending on what they're used to in the past, and sometime owner's project managers or clerk of the works were really just hired at the construction phase. For different types of projects, and as things advanced, and especially with schoolwork in the state, the OPM now has more of a role in terms of pre-construction. The duties of the owner's project manager shall include, but not be limited to, providing advice and consultation respect to design, value engineering, scope of the work, cost estimating, general contracting, subcontracting, pre-qualifications pursuant to section blah, blah, blah. So that whole process is then laid out in the law where you advertise, you write a request for proposal, which tells them exactly what you want to do. We're in a good position, because the municipal building committee has done a lot of work, and we can tell them exactly what we want to do. If we wrote an open RFP, then the cost would be a lot higher, because they would know what they were supposed to be doing, so they'd give us a higher fee. Now, the whole process is based on a qualification selection process, which means we write the RFP, they submit back qualifications package to us, any firm that's interested. A select group of people, either a representative or a committee formed by the board, reviews that, makes a recommendation to you, and with that recommendation, we would then probably do a short list of three, have interviews, an open public interview of three people, and then select one. Once you select somebody, now you negotiate their fee. There are guidelines for fee, and it's, it's, it's the tried and true method in the state for procurement of public design processes. So in order to get all that done, the thought in, in what we're shaping up and trying to do is a push, and we certainly would like to get an OPM on board, so what I'm investigating at the moment is maybe for simple design services, we could hire an OPM, and I might suggest somebody like the OPM that's doing the Salisbury project, because they've just done a most recent police project, police station project for a neighboring town, to provide simple services of, of assessing the recommendation that we give to you, attending one public meeting, hopefully before the annual town meeting, and being present at annual town meeting to give their assessment on the recommendation. So we, we could rush out and, and hire the OPM, and we'd like to hire the right person.
Eric, can I ask you a question?
Yep.
And I'm not that sharp tonight, so I might have missed it. Where does the hiring of the OPM originate? With your municipal building committee, with Tracy, or the Board of Selectmen? Who starts it? Where do we, where do we begin that process?
Well, we can start the process, and I would think that the, the person that makes the, the entity, the person, you could have a person do it. You could have one person do it. You could have a committee do it. If you have a committee do it, you're into open meeting laws, and it's probably a good thing. There should be at least two people from the town, and we would assume that position of Tracy's or Board of Selectmen is an entity. Martha certainly, as a planner, could be somebody that is the quote owner of this project. I would like to serve, if possible, on that committee. And then I would think that we'd like people with design and construction experience, because the people that make the selection need to be responsible for seeing the project through for the person that they picked.
And you, and your thoughts are to begin that process as quickly as possible?
Well, yes, and then no. If we could, if without shortchanging or getting the process by having a consultant be present at town meeting that we haven't selected through the process, but is there as a consultant just to provide an opinion, we could then, we would still then have to go out and advertise, go through a selection process, and have multiple firms submit, which is what we want, but we're trying to get to the annual town meeting, and the real point of getting to the annual town meeting is to have a third party that's not in this room right now, that assesses all the work that's been done, to give the residents assurance that what we're doing is, is reasonable before we vote on it. So we could hire that person. Possibly, we can get a, I'll call him just a consultant to come in and provide that, that third party. Third-party cost estimate, I've taken, previously taken the work from CSS architects, taken their numbers, put it back into the municipal building committee numbers, adjusted those accordingly, and come up with previous numbers I've given you. Time has gone by. There's been some construction inflation. We've had one or two spaces come up, like the cable, the media room in which to provide services, and there's more equipment, and we're getting some money back from the cable company in order to provide that equipment, and so we should have a space for it. More trailers, because it's a funk trailer, and so we're making sure that we have those fit in, and so the, the program just is a little bigger than we had previously presented. So that's the process. I don't have an exact one, but if we started, you know, if I started today, and it took me a week to write an ad, it would take me two weeks, and we're into Christmas in terms of writing this RFP, or invitation to bid, as the state calls it, we'd have to issue that. These firms need at least, you know, you have to give them some time, three weeks would probably be enough, maybe four weeks, depending, coming out of the new year, in terms of them providing their qualifications back to us. It is on a pretty standardized form, so I would think that maybe we could do it quickly in three weeks. We then need that committee to evaluate, come up with a determination, present that back to you. You know, we're looking at Board of Selectmen meeting dates and trying to make it all fit. And as, what I'm finding is that I didn't get as much done in the municipal building, didn't get, committee didn't get as much done in the past month, because it's just a bigger lift this time than it was previously to reassess, redot, and go back through the motion. So.
Are you looking for us tonight to direct you to?
No, I'm looking to inform you tonight. I don't really have a question to ask you. I'm not looking for you. I'm looking for you to understand what the process, the process could be, and help your thoughts in terms of getting to April, and how you would find most advantageous, a consultant or, or hiring. I mean, some towns don't have municipal building committee, and they go right out through the state process, and they hire an OPM, and they say, "We need a new facility, start, help us." And they, they, they do the process, and sometimes that takes several years to get through that process, just as ours, but you're paying this outside consultant. You haven't paid me anything yet. No one wants any payment.
Did you get the yet?
Okay, I'll scrub the yet. No, I don't want any payment. But we have a shape. We have an understanding of a project, and whether it's a new, new building here to solve this facility, whether it's a renovation with possibly a police, a new police station addition, which means future renovation of town hall, whether that, that, those pieces then are moved up and down morgue and av, depending on what happens with, with the site, that's all natural design process for selecting an OPM, having them vet the work that we've done, and then hiring a designer in order to actually put the rooms and the, and the program together in a way that we could understand, come up with the next cost estimate, and start moving through the process.
Now, I'm gonna cut you a little short, because I have.
I'm done.
Good. A public hearing. Do me a favor. Can you, is the next municipal building committee Thursday?
Thursday morning at seven o'clock.
Can you come up with more of a roadmap and a guideline that almost answers Damon's question of where we go next?
I hope to.
All right.
Do you have a timeline you'd like to have this person hired by?
Well, by Thursday morning, I will have a, two things on the schedule, or just a program, which should go fairly quickly. The second thing is just discussing the options that we're going to give to CSS, and the third is this OPM process, which is really more of a timeline schedule, and if I could do that, that's what I'll present.
And if you don't get it done right then, we can receive it at the next, even as late as the 22nd of January. You've done such a great job that we have full faith in.
Thank you.
The timing and the process that you bring to us.
Yeah, let's see, this meeting and the next meeting, and if it happens in between, then it will be more of a formality for the next meeting, if we can get everything together and disseminate it to you, or there'll be more of a discussion at the next meeting, because that's what we need.
And I think I can speak for the room. I don't know where we'd be without you.
Thank you.
It's just as plain as that.
Thank you.
Seven o'clock, right here.
Municipal building committee he's talking about.
Thursday. Thank you.
Thursday. We have a 7:15 public hearing. Can I have a motion to open that, and then we will read the challenge?
Motion to open.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Damon, do you have it in front of you?
Yep. Residents of the town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Tuesday, December 8, 2015, at 7:15 PM at the Newbury Town Hall, 25 High Road, Newbury, Mass., the Newbury Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing in accordance with provision of MGL Chapter 61A on the notice of intent to sell 255 High Road, Newbury, Mass., for other than agricultural use, specifically for residential use. The lot consists of 13.2 acres, more or less, and is shown as Lot 64 on the town of Newbury, Assessor's Map R27. For more information, contact the Selectmen's office at 978-465-0862, extension 301. All persons interested or wishing to be heard relative to this notice of intent to sell for other use should appear at the time and place designated above. Newbury Board of Selectmen.
Now, I think that this is the first time, yes.
Could have a vote to open?
Oh, we didn't have a vote to open. But there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, Alan. I think this is the first time we've done this in quite a while. Is it, Martha? So as always, we probably need some direction and need to have some of the facts illuminated, and I imagine a lot of this room is here for this. So Martha, could I ask you to kind of explain some of the direction and some of the steps and where we're going next?
Okay. Hopefully, I didn't turn it off. So as was stated in the notice, this is a 13.2 acre parcel. It's currently in Chapter 61A, which is an agricultural tax. It doesn't broadcast, only for the TV.
Can you hear down back?
Yeah.
Okay. Martha, can, you can look at, we can hear you.
So it's, it's basically a tax, a tax status in 61A, and whenever a property is going to be sold that's in 61A, it needs to go through a process of being offered to the town, which has a right of first refusal. And the town, once, once the clock starts ticking, which is the day after the notice is mailed, the town has 120 days within which to make a decision. The possible decisions are that the town might exercise its right of first refusal and decide that it would like to acquire the parcel for town purposes. It can assign its right of first refusal to a conservation entity, like the trustees of reservations or Essex County Green Belt, if it's determined that there is conservation value to the property. It can decide that there is no, no benefit to the town and essentially decline its right of first refusal, and then it goes forward with the, the original sale. And all of this is predicated on a bona fide purchase and sale agreement between a buyer and the seller. And the final option, which is not the recommended one, is a default option, which is to let the 120 days go with no decision. So as part of the process, a public hearing is required under the law. The notice of intent to sell was distributed to the selectmen, to planning, conservation, the assessors, and the state forester, and so input from all of those groups will, will be forthcoming. The planning board has discussed it. I know that the conservation commission is going to put it on their December 15 agenda. I don't know about the Board of Assessors. And the board will also be looking for input from the historical commission, the agricultural commission, and some other bodies in town. As, as was noted, it's a 13.2 acre parcel, which is in the residential agricultural district on High Road. It's just north of Cottage Road and just south of where Carol LaRocque lives, if everybody knows where that is. It's part of what was once a larger parcel that was owned by Florence Bushy. Mr. Hurley, who owned it, divided it into four parcels early in the 2000s through the approval not required process, and the one where he continued to live was the largest one, this 13.2 acres. The front part of the parcel, front half of the parcel essentially, has been open field, used for haying. The back half is woodland, buts trustees of reservations land, and also the Parker River Wildlife Refuge. Mr. Hurley lived in a barn that was on, near the front of the property. It was kind of half barn, half residence, is my understanding. And there is an offer from Mr. True to purchase the property. There is a trail that goes through, through the property, through the Evergreen Cemetery, kind of connects to trustees' land. And the very back portion, as you may have seen in your packets, the very, very back portion of it is in the area of critical environmental concern in the 100-year flood plain. But let's wait until the end.
Now, as I understand it, because of what you prefaced first, that some of the other boards are in the process of looking at this, I think we're going to hear from the many people that are here tonight, and we still might have to continue this till we hear from the other boards to our next meeting.
Yeah, I think that would be.
Just so my board knows that, because you might not know that. And for the folks out there, could you hear me?
Yes.
So we're very happy to hear from every single person tonight that might have a yea or nay, and then we're going to have to hear and process some of the other information from the other boards. So Martha, thank you very much.
Before Martha steps down, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Does the Board of Selectmen have any rights as far as setting conditions or things like that, or is it simply a yes or no, we'll buy it or we won't? You know, if we allow the sale to go through, we can't put any conditions upon that sale, correct?
Tracy's, Tracy's nodding. I know the PNS, the PNS can't have any conditions on it.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thank you. That being said, and with our board deciding tonight, or in the process of deciding tonight with the information that we will get from the other boards, who would like to speak on the matter that's before us tonight? I'm sure there are a lot of people here. Who would like to speak? Anyone? Come on up. Introduce yourself, please.
Hi, my name's Adam True, and I'm here with my wife, Lauren. We're both from the area. I grew up in Byfield, and Lauren grew up in Rowley. We currently live in Newportport, and we're looking to move back to Newbury. So I brought, and all the board members have some paperwork, so that hopefully everybody can kind of see, and if they want to take a look. It shows the 13.2 acre parcel here, and this area of critical environmental concern in the back here. What we're proposing to do is, in the front, the barn will be on its own, one acre, in the house lot, which will be something that I'm going to build speculative, spec build, basically, will be the second lot right behind. And then the rest of it's going to remain in agricultural status, which will be my wife and myself, it'll be our house, which is kind of right back.
Can you repeat that now?
Yeah, sure. So.
My arms aren't going to stay up here forever.
The, the front lot is going to be the barn, which is going to be broken off and retained by myself, and there'd be a speculative build right behind it in the field, very similar to the house adjacent, which will also be an acre, minus whatever road has to be put in. And the final lot will be ours, Lot 3, which will remain in agricultural status or go back into, however that works.
Where is this environmental critical leave over there?
There's a red line way back here at the end.
Okay.
And it's the AC/EC, and like described earlier, we get the trustees, the reservation, and the federal parker, parker of a federal wildlife preserve, a budding.
Is it planned and doing anything with that wooded area or no?
No, it's just gonna, basically, the house is upright, about 150 feet in the wood line, up on the high ground, and then everything else is just going to stay.
Martha, can I actually explain, maybe, once again, the area of critical concern?
Thank you.
The area of critical concern, as I know it, is not a regulation, but it can certainly temper how you look at it and almost formulate regulations from it. Is it the eight-foot or 10-foot, or where is?
I think it's the 10.
10-foot contour. It used to be the eight-foot contour line, right? Or has it always been the 10-foot contour line?
It's always been the 10.
All right. And Martha, can you explain a little more about the AC/EC? But I mean, it's not a regulation, but it spurns building regulations, how close you can build. Is it 100 feet to the AC/EC, but you can intrude with certain? Go ahead. But I just wanted people to know, when they hear AC/EC, that doesn't mean nothing can be done in the AC/EC. It is also, you know, a, it's a line drawn in space. Essex to Newportport, I believe, signed on to this. Newportport did not.
Did not, right.
So.
And so a lot of, lot of great marshes in the AC/EC, and kind of wraps around and actually comes, comes further inland. And under our zoning, if you're forming a new lot, if you formed a 40,000 square foot lot, which is what our requirement, 32% of that has to be outside of wetlands and outside of the AC/EC. The AC/EC line and the wetlands line sometimes is coterminous, but not always. It's also close to the 100-year flood plain line, depending on where it is. So any construction would need to be out of that, but it's, it's far enough back in this property that it really wouldn't be affecting any, any kind of construction or the square footage allowed for a lot.
Frank, come on up. Introduce yourself.
I wasn't, I did not come to here tonight.
Frank, introduce yourself.
Frank Bertolino, Maple Terrace. The, so my understanding is you're going to keep the barn on a separate lot. You're going to build a spec house that you're going to sell, hope to sell. Then the rest of the parcel is going to remain as one lot that you will build your home on, forever home, maybe. Would you be willing to put into that lot as a deed, that you would not build other properties on that third lot?
I suppose you should come and address it.
Now, he's asking you to do a deed restriction, so you know.
Well, it was going to be part of what we were going to do anyways.
Okay.
So that the back parcel could never be broken again, because we just don't want it to be.
I mean, I think that's got to give the audience, other people, Martha's going to speak to, again, you know, great faith. I mean, that's, you know, he's speaking from his heart, if he's going to deed restrict his property to what he's saying he's going to do tonight. So Martha.
And also, if this does, if the sale does go through, in order to do the, the work that he's talking about, it's going to have to go forward as a subdivision. It can't, it can't, there's not enough frontage there to create any lots, so there will be a road. And questions like that, deed restrictions, would all come up as part of the subdivision process, which would be a public hearing process.
Now, we're gonna, if, if it's a deed restriction, such as Adam's talking about, will it, will it mean we're going to have a, have a 22-foot subdivision control our road, or can, because it's going to only be one house, can it be a more minimal road?
That would really be up to the board. They could certainly request a waiver, and it would be up to the board to determine whether that was in the public good to do that.
Nice not to have a highway down there.
That wasn't how you felt about our road.
Huh? Well, you had more than one house.
Yeah.
All right. Is there any thoughts? Would anyone like to speak? Yes, introduce yourself.
My name's Paul Hurley. I just really want to introduce myself. So it was my father who owned the property. It's now part of his estate, about a year ago. And this is now in his estate trust, and it's set empty, basically, for well over a year now. We've longed on that, probably going almost two years. So it's part of executing his estate, and I mean, that's the intent to sell the property. It is a beautiful piece of property. My father loved it there, and I, you know, when I talked to Adam about his proposals and stuff, it seemed like a reasonable thing, and he was going to keep it fairly pristine, do a nice job, so better than some of the other proposals that were made to me. So anyway, I just want to at least introduce myself. Anybody any questions or anything?
My name's Elizabeth Mitchell. I live at 257 High Road, and I'm going to butter to 255. I also want to clarify, I am a member of the planning board, but I am appearing tonight in my personal capacity as a resident of Newbury and as a butter to the, the property in question. I think, just to visualize, oh, the camera's here, but this, this is my lot here, and this is my home here, at the back, at the back of one of the lots that was subdivided in the, in the early 2000s. A couple of points that I wanted to make, you can put it down, Jeff, I don't know. Is that, as Mr. Hurley said, it is a beautiful piece of property. It is in large part one of the reasons why we, we chose this home and we live in this area. As Martha also indicated, it is, there's only enough frontage for the particular lot that's being sold for one home. When we purchased this property, it was always our understanding that this property could not be further developed, and, and we bought with that understanding and with that intent. You may hear from others tonight that share that, that share that view. So it is of great concern to us that the property is not only being sold and taking it. So, it is of great concern to us that the property is not only being sold and taking out of the sixty-one A status, but that it is somebody seeking to develop, and I, and I understand that it is only two home, two additional homes. And I appreciate Mr. Tru's statement that he would put some of it in conservation. I did note that he only referenced the wooded lot as opposed to anything in the field. So, that would be a further concern to me. There, there is a three acre deed, lot size restriction currently in the deed, but my understanding is that that perhaps has expired and is no, is expired after thirty years, and it went into effect in the late, in the late sixties. The other thing too, to, and Martha talked about this, but this part of the property, this piece of property here is all part, is all owned by the trustees of reservation, and it's actually part of the Old Town Hill system. There are, I'm not sure if you can see them here, but you do go in through, I think it's here, through the cemetery, and there are a number of walking trails that come back in through here. They connect through the, the wooded area of this property. So, this piece is owned by the trustees of reservation, and this, I guess that would be to the east, is owned by the National Wildlife Association. So, on the, on that L is all preserved. It would be lovely to see that maintained. I know that the purchase price is, for the property is probably much higher than what the town could consider purchasing on its own behalf. And, but I would like the opportunity to explore further whether there are organizations that would be interested or able to purchase, should the town be interested or willing to assign their right of first refusal. I have spoken to the trustees of reservation. It was a preliminary conversation, and frankly, it wasn't, I, I don't think that they currently have the funding, but they were willing to talk to me and give me further ideas and other avenues to explore, and particularly possibly other agencies. Just in closing, I would like to say that we would very much like to see the property preserved. We were willing to purchase the property and had expressed interest, but our, I don't know why that didn't happen. But, I guess that's, that's about all I have to say at this point in time, and I appreciate your time. If there's questions that I can answer about the property, I'd be happy to do so.
Thank you very much.
I wanted to clarify one thing, just, so, would the deed restriction would be the whole entire field and the whole back wooded lot, just so that you could understand? And that the walking trail, yeah, it goes in the trustees' land and not on my land. It turns right here, stays on the trustees', and goes right to the Parker River land.
And with all due respect, it's, the trail does go all the way through, and it comes, no, here, I'll just turn it so they can see. The trail comes out, it comes, and it comes back here, and then there's, there's trails that come all the way back through here.
Right, that are on this, this continuous property. There's, see that little line right there? That's the trail that goes through to this cemetery or something?
The cemetery is over here.
Oh, okay.
And so the trail comes through here, and it connects, and it comes through here, and many people actually walk it, and often we see people walking their dogs and whatnot.
On private land?
Yep, they come through and they walk all the way out. And it was actually something that Bill Hurley permitted and encouraged.
Yeah, and the three acre deed restriction did, did fall out, so, and I have all the paperwork to support that as well.
Adam, while you're up there.
Sure.
I just had a few questions. What size houses, square footage wise, are you gonna?
Yep.
Are you proposing to build?
The, the small rendering that I drew here for the house lot in the front, this one is twenty-six hundred square feet with basement space, and our house is twenty, currently twenty-two hundred square foot, but probably will end up more like twenty-eight hundred, because of above a garage space. And we plan to have a barn as well, too.
Now, you mean maintaining the barn in the front, or a barn in addition to the house on the back?
Probably a barn in addition in the backyard.
Okay.
Separate structure though later.
And?
When I can afford it.
Yes. What is the, what are you proposing? You said you're gonna maintain lot, possession of Lot One, which has a barn on it?
Yep.
Are you gonna be renting that space out, or what is your use for construction?
Yeah, my brother, actually, my brother Carson Tru is gonna rent the space that's there, and I'm gonna run my, kinda my little wood shop out of there, basically, and have some of my equipment and whatever else there.
I wasn't sure if it was gonna stay as a residence or become part of true construction.
Basically, it'll stay kinda a residence, but yeah, it may become part of true construction at some point, yeah.
Okay.
Adam, how many yards is this? Do you know wide?
Uh, it is roughly.
Just so people have an idea how wide that is.
Yeah, it is roughly two hundred and fifty feet.
Just shy, it's gotta be just shy of that, since you can't get two lots.
Uh, yeah, well, the access is kinda crossed like this of the front. I think it, I think it is right around two hundred and fifty feet.
All right, good.
I might be wrong, but roughly.
Okay. Thanks. How many people are here for this, two fifty-five tonight? Can you raise your hands? So, we've got quite a few people. Yes, would you like to speak?
Well, I have a couple of questions. I'm Ron Tolyos, here with my wife Kendra, and we're butters to this property for the last twenty-eight years, and it's been a great joy to live next to this field. I understand it was plumber's field in history, and there was a harness track there. So, we're, we're concerned about what's gonna be in that field, because it's, it sure is nice now. The barn's gonna stay. I need clarification. Is there a house gonna be in the middle of the field and yours in the back?
I'll just stay up, I'll just stay up here. So.
Adam, put it right, put it right there.
Sure. Sure.
No, I'm fine.
I'm Professor Shelly.
So, we kind of intend to keep the rest of the field as is, to preserve the look, you know, 'cause we like the field and we preserve it, we're gonna hay it. We're gonna try to locate lot, house lot number two, a little bit more forward, and we're gonna be planting considerable amount of trees through here and here, evergreen trees to kind of give that house some privacy. But then the rest of the field's gonna maintain. We plan to hay it. I know my wife wants to have goats, so we'll have to feed them some of them.
Well, that's good. We have a lot of poison ivy.
Yeah.
The goats will eat it.
But this, this portion here does plan to be cleared, you know, about two hundred feet in, roughly, and thinned, maybe not totally cleared, mostly thinned, 'cause there's some nice mature oak trees and things like that we'd like to keep.
I'm surprised that more dwellings are gonna be allowed in here, because I was at the auction, and there was a statement made that there only could be one dwelling per lot.
I, I had Scott Cameron from, Warren and Cameron do a highest in best possible use, which is kind of what they do, so. And this could actually potentially under the Subdivision Control Act, add a full subdivision road, meaning everything that has to be. We could have six house lots, is what we could do, maximum. They would go right across the field, one, two, three, four, five, six, six being the last one. So, he, he kinda drafted that up, because he says it's commonly a question that comes up, well, what could you do? And, you know, that addressed that question for us at least, you know, in our eyes, at least we know what, what the maximum use is, so.
Okay, and there's no deed restriction on that, that landed, it may have been for the other, or?
Yeah, it was, it was, none of the deed restrictions were conveyed forth, for this particular parcel. They did remain on the other three lots of the program office.
That's what, and that's exactly it. So, there are restrictions that were put on the lots that were subdivided back in, roughly around two thousand.
Yeah, just not on the original parcel.
Main lot, there are no restrictions on it, and what was there from back in the nineteen sixties has expired, so it's been no longer.
So, Adam, can you articulate again, and next time you gotta come up to what he said, there's no deed restrictions?
There's no, 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 no deed restrictions left, no. They were way back when it was Florence Bushy, and she owned the whole thing, which was the racetrack area. That's when the restriction was placed, but under mass law, the way, the way that it was worded and such, not as a, I don't know all the jargon, but I had my lawyers do all the work to make sure that it was, what it was. And it, I get, I have one question, I guess. If the property was to be in sixty-one A, and Paul was gonna sell it to me in sixty-one A, does that make a difference if it just traded hands? It's gonna trade hands in sixty-one A. I'm not gonna change the use prior to purchasing. I'll change the use of it after.
I mean, that's a question you're looking for us to answer. Martha might have the answer, but it certainly might be town council.
Sure.
I don't know, Tracy, if something comes up for sale in sixty-one A, does it, if it stays in sixty-one A, does it even have to come before the board? Or is that a question for Jenny?
I'd have to ask Jenny. I don't know the answer to that.
I did have a lawyer who was handling the estate for the property, pointed to his research, says, actually, it wouldn't have to. So, I mean, and that was, his original recommendation to me was just to sell it to Adam, leave it in sixty-one A, and just hand it off to him to deal with.
But I think if you go before the planning board, and I see Nick shaking his head down back, I think if, if you go before the planning board and try to subdivide that, it's gonna come to sixty-one A anyway.
And that's exactly what happened. So, the discussion with Adam, when I told him that, he said, well, we, he preferred to get this all out in the air before the, anything is sold, and just take care of it now, because, you know, my, I don't wanna hide anything.
We could've, we could've, we could've traded hands on the property, as it remained in sixty-one A, and then I would've dropped the bombshell, and it would've been a mess. So, we're trying to kinda do this in a preventative manner to see that, you know, instead of just doing that, it actually, I believe under the law, if I read it correctly, I'd have to wait one full year for the sixty-one A plan that's currently in for the year to expire, then I could, I could change it, change its use.
And I think for the people that are here, that are in the audience, being an old planning board member, I mean, what's going on here tonight, you're still gonna have to go before the planning board and apply for a subdivision on that location. So, whatever the board decides is not gonna be your last chance to discuss the, what goes on on the property too, right, Martha? Because you're gonna go through public hearings, and so, I mean, it's not skipping the planning board, it's not taking a leap, because we're taking it out of sixty-one A. Come up here if you have.
Is there anything binding on what Mr. Tru has said?
Start again, so they can hear you.
Oh.
It's television that wants to hear you.
Is anything binding on, on what Mr. Tru said about not building those extra houses?
I'm not a lawyer, I can't tell you. I know that if he restricts his deed, that he's not gonna be able to build those houses.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this tonight?
Hi, I'm Jean McCarthy. I live in Byfield on Courtney Drive, and I think what Adam's proposing is a great idea. I really think that quality of work and what he represents as a builder would, would really represent that property well. But I'd like to know if the town is having interest in buying it prior to, you know, Adam being able to take possession of it. Does the town have any thoughts on what they would do with it?
That's what we're here for tonight.
Have you, is there any discussion that's been made that I didn't hear? I mean, would something like a proposed solar farm that would make a lot of money for the town if you purchased the property? And a solar farm that would, I mean, it's already clear cutted, would that be something that would be of interest to the town to make a lot of money? Or at least up for discussion?
Yeah, the reason to hold the public hearings is to find out if there's interest within the town in this property and possible uses for it. In our, we've, in the first discussion about it, we talked about the potential of parking, overflow parking for the, that's a different property, sorry.
That's the pines.
That's the pines.
I did the same thing, at the same time.
Who's buying that one?
It's not before us yet.
I mean, that's, but that's the reason that we're holding the public hearing, is to get, we get input from residents and butters, and then we get input from the other boards and committees about the potential uses, pitfalls of owning it, et cetera. And, and that's why we, we hold the hearing. So, we have not started discussion. We started discussion on a different property that then nothing happened with, which is what I was confused about.
Okay. Well, it's just something if the town is considering that we should explore that option.
There's been, I believe, either two or three other solar proposals that have been discussed in the general region, and the trunk lines and all the carrying systems will not accommodate them, so it's off, it's, it's not on the charts.
It's not, that, that, that property, okay?
Yeah.
Just something.
The chairman, may I?
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, it wasn't on the chart, oh, sorry.
It was?
It wasn't, it's back on, I mean, did they make some?
It was, it was a few years ago now. I, I wouldn't rule it out.
But they haven't, they haven't improved anything. Go ahead.
In a perfect world, yeah, we'd love to buy it, we'd love to put a solar farm out there, but we have so many other uses for money now. Town hall, police station, that has to take precedence long before our wish list. So, that's just my personal opinion. I can't speak for the whole board.
No, I know that. I just, I mean, I know that a solar farm, when you are the landowner.
Right. I'd love it.
Potential of millions of dollars. So, if the town is looking for a way to make money, that could be a discussion to be, you know, discussed. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, Adam.
Thank you, Jean.
So, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Sir?
All right. Hi, I'm John Kennedy. I live at two fifty-three High Road, which is this thing right here. Rather, well.
Nice to meet you.
Rather shocked than surprised at this proposal. I was in the impression, as Elizabeth mentioned, that at least my covenants say the lots aren't subdivisible. So, learning over the last few weeks that they would potentially, you know, go for a subdivision has been, like I said, shocking, dismaying. And perhaps even more so, that I see these lines here right beside my house, which I guess is the road or the driveway?
At this point, yeah, kind of the intended path, but there was an alternate path of going, I guess, it was going into the house here, and then it went across to this side of the field, and then went over and in. But either way, it was some sort of straight shot, only because it's the only really option to get down and over. Which, which would it be, tree lined for the first four hundred feet in with the same species of tree kinda planted all the way along, you know, for the future for it to grow in like that.
Okay. Well, two things, I guess. One is, I'm quite surprised about this proposal, but I'd encourage, you know, time to maybe think about it more, talk about the potential impact. My wife and I bought the property three years ago. You know, beautiful field back here, gets hay twice a year. Our house happens to be on a hundred foot lot, of which we are probably within ten feet or so of the, the lot line. So, to see the road coming right beside the house is a little dismaying. No, I understand. And then the other thing, which I think Elizabeth brought up, is the property's unique in that there are all kinds of trails back here, including the trail from the cemetery that cuts through the lot over here. A lot of us were allowed to invite that, to use it routinely, dogs, horses, hiking, snowshoeing, great access out there. And it does connect over to the Old Town Fields Hill and so on. So, it's, has unique potential that perhaps ought to be explored, maybe not for a solar farm, but from the ocean all the way to here is conservation land. Parker River trustees landed here, you go up the side. You go up to Side Street, Hayfield, Trustee's land up towards Route One and beyond. Kinda like the, the missing link that connects the two. So, I think it does have unusual value as a conservation piece of property, realizing that, you know, painting it might be expensive. But I'd encourage a little more time so I could find out more about what's going on.
I was a little just, you know, 'cause I can't, we can't even buy it before, so we're trying not to put too much into it, I guess, because if we can't even buy it
Yeah, sure.
in the first place, I don't wanna put too much time and effort and money into exploring all these options. But we, conceptually, I've, I've got, you know, to where I am and then I have some other options, but I'm certainly open to discussion with all the, you know, the abutters.
Okay. So, I guess my question for the board, not knowing the process, is, is tonight's meeting to make a decision? Or is it possible to, you know, delay this till you can, you know, look into this a little further?
One of the things I said in the beginning, that tonight we will have information from the people here. We will be getting information from all our other boards. This meeting has to be continued anyway. That was one of the first statements I made.
Okay.
This is funny ground for any of our boards. Being an old planning board member, I have been in this position many times when, especially on High Road, a lot of those narrow tracks go all the way back out into the marsh. And there's, like next to Bob Colby's house, there was a subdivision. There could be subdivisions all along High Road.
Sure.
In fact, we put in place on the planning board at that time, the pork chop lot.
That was right before.
And the pork chop lot doesn't exist anymore, right? I mean, we had the idea of a pork chop lot, which was to have one house back and have it be a five acre one house. So, you didn't get six. So, it was use of the land for an owner like this gentleman that needs to sell the property and wants to do something with the property so that he can leave the property and make money. So, maybe we should revisit the pork chop lot, because everyone at that time was incredibly afraid of the pork chop lot. But, you know, the pork chop lot for one house and five acres certainly is better than maybe subdivision. So, as we plan in this town, we come up against these situations. No one in this board is gonna take it lightly, especially if there is a conservation group that wants to maybe buy it. And it is also gonna be vetted by historical,
Agricultural.
agricultural,
Conservation.
Conservation, planning board, I mean, so we still are in a process and we are gonna continue. So, and that would be who you guys to, talk to Adam, talk to Yona, talk to other people.
Alright.
Alright?
Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up and speak.
Would that road need to be of a specific type in order to have, be the actual frontage for a house in the field? I would think it has to be bigger than a driveway.
We do, we do have regulations for roadways in town, and actually, it's not something that could go straight back as shown, as shown there. It needs to be a cul-de-sac, so there would be a, a circle that, that the frontage for the back lot would come off of. We do have requirements for width and the size of the cul-de-sac. As we discussed earlier, there's a possibility for request for waiver. The board may not grant that. But if it's deemed to be in, in the public good, there could be a possibility that it, it could be, you know, somewhat less than what we require. But that would be, all, all come out through the subdivision process.
Right, thank you.
Is there any other questions? Please come up.
I don't really wanna, I'm Kendra Tolios from Torrelane, by the way. I don't wanna ask a question, I just wanna voice the fact that I wish you best of luck, and you and your wife. But the changes are upsetting sometimes. When we bought our house, we were told that that field was never gonna be built on it. There would never be anything there, that it had covenants on it, which I believed. I guess the realtor believed it as well. And then I saw four lots, the barn and three additional lots split. And I was like, wait a minute, there's supposed to be covenants out there. So, that happened, and we gained some lovely neighbors. I wish I knew the ones that were here, I would've been better tonight. And, you know, I don't have anything against progress, but when you live in the country in an open space, it's going to be changed. I think it's just a little disheartening, because I grew up in Danvers and I never wanna see Newbury be a Danvers. And
Neither do we.
Yeah, I hope. But anyways, I just wanted to voice the fact that I appreciate the open space. It would be my dream to see it become part of the conservation land, but, you know, whatever happens, happens. But I just wanted you to know how I feel as, as a neighbor.
Thank you.
I just wanted to speak to Paul's behalf because, you know, I think it's, I understand everybody's concerns. But when you get to this point, you also have to look from the standpoint of Paul and his family that the, the piece of land that they retain and they own has the best use for them. And that, that includes the increase in value. Now, if, if he can only sell this as the barn with all this acreage, it's undivisible. It's only got an X dollars, you know, and it's probably worth quite a bit more than it is worth more if it's subdivisible like it is. You know, so that's, that becomes kinda a tough sticking point and a balancing point, because I think Paul, you know, could've probably gone to somebody that wanted to ram six lots in there and maybe fetch a higher dollar, and they didn't, so.
Yeah, and I can speak to, I mean, I, I, you know, I had it appraised, I had it, talked to several engineering companies and, you know, some people approached me about doing things like that, and some of them, a lot of them looked at the barn as a tear down, right? They just, well, get rid of that. Now, all kinds of options open up as far as what you wanna do with property. I, I really didn't have an interest in doing that. I tried to get out and, you know, I kinda wish I maybe talked to a few other people, but, you know, honestly, when Adam came in, he, we talked once and it didn't look I was gonna have, I called him back, 'cause some of the other deals I was hearing, I just didn't care for. So, I went back to him and said, hey, and we negotiated a little bit and we came up with a proposal, and honestly, I felt, 'cause it would be good for the property. And I said, I think the way it is needed, it can be subdivided, and again, I've had people tell me all kinds of things they would tear down the barn and do. No interest in doing that, you know. So, as I said, this seemed like a reasonable approach on what to do with property.
When you look at a piece of land like that, there are a lot of other factors that go into it. I mean, we all say there could be a subdivision there. It is also going to be commensurate with what the soils are and a lot of other things, wells. But that doesn't mean that, I mean, things seem to perk pretty well on that side of the road, and there seems to be available water. So, are there any questions from our board? Because now would really be the time to broaden your understanding of what's going on. JR, I know you've got something.
I have a question from Martha. Do you think the lot is wide enough to facilitate the type of circle that we see in these types of developments? It seems like it would be tight.
I was just thinking about that myself, actually. I think we'd have to look at it, and that might be a reason for, for a waiver potentially. We require a hundred and sixty feet out to out, I think, and, and with two hundred and fifty feet, that doesn't leave a lot left over. But we'd really have to look at the design and see what, what would work on it.
Okay.
Damon, Chuck, Alicia? Any other questions, please?
So, I have a question. Adam, is this, this drawing that you gave us,
Yeah.
is that gonna be for the spec house, or is that for your property?
That's possibly the spec house.
The spec house?
It's gonna look like a, kind of a modern farmhouse.
This is the same, same home, two different drawings, correct? So, do you have an idea on what, what your property will look like?
Yeah, our property will be, again, be a similar L-shaped farmhouse back here. A porch and then a barn probably separated from it, on the, kinda the higher side right here. I have it drawn a little differently there, but I don't, ideas change daily, so.
Yeah.
But
But you're looking to be commensurate with the, with the neighborhood, correct?
Yeah. There was, there was restrictions placed on the other three lots about size of the house, but, you know, it couldn't be anything less than two thousand square feet, I think, and had to have an attached garage. But, you know, we'd definitely be leased at that, so.
I have a question for Paul, actually. As this process moves forward and more input comes in from other boards and neighbors, I don't know if this is actually sort of after the horse is out of the barn situation, but things like preserving the barn seems to be of interest to you. Is that something you might write into your purchase and sale, or the maintenance of open space? So that rather than these restrictions which Adam, who I've known most of his life, I honestly believe will carry out, but, you know, Adam could buy the property and then his brother runs him over with a truck, and suddenly things change, you know. Stranger things have happened in, in our town.
You know, and certainly I, I could talk to Adam about that. I mean, at the end of the day, we both have to agree on the purchase and sale. I mean, part of the agreement on that sale is, you know, it is an old barn. I, I mean, probably keep that in mind, you know. You know, whether the town were to buy it, whether the conservation group, there's a building, a structure in there that has to be maintained and probably worked on. You know, it's in dire need of, you know, some stain on it, some paint, so there's a lot of windows. So, I mean, part of the state, one of the statements in the, the purchase and sale is, he's buying it as is.
Yeah.
I did not wanna undertake, you know, really what it would take, and he's got more skill than I am, to get that building up to, you know, stuff to be really, you know, what it should be. I mean, it's a beautiful barn, but it's old. It, it, it needs some work. Now, again, the agreement was, you know, verbally, that he was gonna keep it in place where I had other people tell me, no, they would be more interested in clearing it and opening the, prop it up, so, I mean, I don't know.
I think it's, the barn to me is, is in fine shape. I don't know exactly the history on it, but there's a plaque inside that says seventeen, seventeen twenty-eight.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's not that old.
Looks like it's built in the, maybe, maybe the twenties or the thirties.
Yeah.
But it's, it's in sound shape frame-wise. It's really kind of an interesting gambrel of barn. And, you know, it's, it just needs an exterior, which we're gonna do, you know, an exterior facelift is basically what it is, but
Yeah.
not a lot of rot, not a lot of any of that stuff, so it's, plans to stand as a pretty strong structure.
So, you know, if that is something that, you know, maybe it makes people feel a little bit better, you know, like certainly we're
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can put some sort of,
renegotiate that.
It's gonna stay no matter what, so if there's, if a restriction of some sort puts people at ease.
Well, just listening to the few concerns we heard, there was, you know, size concerns and, and things like that, and that could be built, rather than happening after, after the fact, it could be built into the purchase and sale, which I think would possibly make people feel much more comfortable. So, I just, I wasn't sure if you were open to that and wanted to ask the question.
Yeah, no, and you, you're absolutely right. I mean, as I said, you know, my father lived in there for quite a while, it was his aunt's before that, and she, she lived there and passed away there. So, you know, I do have some, you know, sentimental attachments to that building. And I would like it, and as I said, the, the people that kinda gave me proposals otherwise, I really kinda just dismiss it and engage with it in much detail. And I said, I actually called Adam back, 'cause out of the offers and the people I had been talking to, he seemed the most agreeable to what he wanted to do with property and the idea of actually living there. You know, versus somebody who develops it, it's gone, was another compelling, you know.
So, if you listen maybe to what JR and Damon's and some of the other questions of the board was, then as this goes to the planning board, Martha, some of these issues will be discussed again at the planning board level, right? When will your meeting be entertained to discuss this? Because there can be screening and everything else built into some of the expectations of a subdivision, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And the board actually did discuss it at its last meeting, and I want
So, you've already discussed a lot of it?
Yes, but what they wanted to do was actually to see if you would be willing to come in to, to talk to them about what their plans are before they make a final recommendation.
Yeah, sure.
So, if I can get you contacting for a week.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, once again, that's an open planning board meeting, and the neighbors can come in
Absolutely.
at that point too.
Yeah, yeah.
And if, and if you kinda think about this, I hope everyone in our board goes away with a little more elaborate understanding of the fact that it could be six houses, it could be two houses, it could be a lot, you know, so maybe it'll be conservation land. But, you know, you have a broader understanding of what we're grappling with and a process that could occur all along High Road with these long tracks are. So.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Chuck, Chuck mentioned something earlier that, right now, one of the biggest issues facing the town of Newbury is a police station. And I know this probably sounds a little crazy, but this is the first time that an opportunity has come before the town of Newbury to purchase land. And I think that it would be maybe a good idea to ask the municipal building committee to vet this spot for a potential police station. Not that I think that it would, it would work, because it doesn't have sewerage and it doesn't have other issues. But I have heard that there are people that are, you know, that have said, we need to move the police department, we need to move it someplace else. We need to take property eminent, eminent domain. I mean, I've heard all, all of it. And I think that it might serve the town in a good way if we can say, well, we had an opportunity here, and we did vet it, and we, we don't like it because of X, Y, and Z. And then if somebody questions it, at least we can say we have looked at it, and nobody can say, well, you had an opportunity to purchase property and you just said no. You didn't even, you didn't even look. I don't know how the municipal building committee feels about that, how my board feels about that. I don't know.
It's a, it's a good question to jump in.
Sure.
Right there. Yes, a lot of people have come to us, have come to meetings and have said, we need a separate police station, we need it somewhere else, we need it on Route One. We just need a singular project somewhere, and the somewhere really hasn't been identified as a lot. And so, as a lot, is the cost of purchase more than five hundred thousand dollars?
It is five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. So, the adjacent property that's, that the last cost offer from Protection Fire Company number two is three hundred thousand dollars. So, right there, any site that's three hundred thousand dollars or more is an add to what we currently have in the budget. Secondly, it doesn't have water, it doesn't have a sewer connection.
Right.
And that's something else that this site has. Third, something that is, is hard to put a price on but has great value is the synergy of having a combined facility, which combines maintenance costs and repair and construction costs for solving the facilities, not only building them, but in the future. So, and, and I guess what I started to say is that the real loss is the synergy of having departments sprinkled across town, where town employees of which we're paying and, and information moving back and forth, when if they can be centrally located, it would be a much greater value provided to the residents if they need to go to different departments or interaction within departments. If we have facility rooms of meeting rooms, then, and there's a joint facility, then that meeting room could be used by any board and any committee, even if it's in the police station or if it's in the town hall, as need be. You start spreading those across town, and, you know, the library, it's nice that it's over there, and it's nice that we have a beach, but in terms of, of working, it doesn't work. So, cost, separate facilities, maintenance costs down the road, and the water and sewer connection all make it a, a not good site. But it's a, it's a good question to bring up, because it's something that we've been dealing with over and over again. And certainly, people do jump on this without understanding of what the site is.
And your board would be one we'd wanna report from anyway, so.
Okay.
Of one of the committees and boards, so.
Thank you, Eric.
Is there any other questions from the board? Is there any other information, questions, or comments from the audience? Then, hearing that, we need a motion to continue this. To what date, Ellen, are we thinking of?
Well, we have a meeting January twelfth and January twenty-sixth.
Should we shoot for the, should we, do you, let me ask the, well, some of the people. Does the twelfth give people enough time? I'm sure it does, it's quite a ways away.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Does the twelfth give the other boards enough time?
Does the twelfth give the other boards enough time? I know the planning board will have.
I think Martha has said that, that.
Yeah, the historical commission, I'm not sure about when their next.
Just gonna say, don't they meet quarterly?
No, they meet monthly.
Okay, all right.
But, um, I'm not sure when their next meeting, a January meeting or fall in relation to your first.
All right. Does it make sense?
What's the will, what's the will of the board? I don't care.
I'd postpone to the twenty-sixth, or not postpone, but push it to the twenty-sixth 'cause that still gives us, we have till around February fifteenth to make a final decision, somewhere in that range, so.
Yeah, the hundred and twenty days ends on March second, and so a decision should be rendered by February twenty-seventh, I think, your second meeting in February, but the last.
Got the math off there, but.
So, why don't we, why don't we go for January twelfth?
Twenty-sixth gives the other boards more time to get input in back to us.
Twenty-sixth or twenty-fifth?
Did you say?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
Okay.
So, I, motion to.
Now, before you make that motion, we'll make it, we'll discuss it.
Uh, I move that we continue the public hearing to February twenty-sixth at seven fifteen.
January.
January. Yep, February would be way too late. January twenty-sixth at seven fifteen P.M.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. My question is, if you have the later date in January of the twelfth, why?
I think it gives.
If Martha has said that all the boards can be in the.
I'm not, I'm not sure about this one.
Okay. So, that's one board.
That's one, and I don't know about the date of schedule for some of the others.
Okay, then, good enough.
I just think it gives everyone.
My only question is, do all the boards have, I guess I was under the impression that only the Board of Selectmen is actually necessary to make a decision.
It, it's part of the information gathering, part of the process.
I was gonna say, part of a decision is the other boards.
Okay.
Okay.
And we don't have.
Quite a bit of it.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
The historical commission doesn't read for nineteen. It's gonna be on there, just December four, fifteen.
For December.
Yeah, most of them are finishing up quicker, but that's fine, too. So, that motion is.
Twenty-sixth gives us time to go.
So, my only concern with the twenty-sixth, then we have another meeting on the ninth, so if, for some reason, we can't close the public hearing on the twenty-sixth, then we have to push it to the ninth, correct? Am I right? So, then the ninth, what's the date, Martha, that we have to vote on this?
Twenty-second.
Might as well give it to them by default.
Well, that's what will happen, it'll go by default.
Which is not, which is not great.
Right.
For a town to go into default, but.
I don't wanna do that.
Does the board still feel that they'd rather have January twenty-sixth as a motion on the, any other discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So, that's when we'll continue the public hearing, too. Now, back on the agenda, any citizens' concerns? Uh, town administrator report, none tonight?
No, I have a report from my, what, you want me to talk about that or not?
You know what? What do we got later in the, do we have something?
Push it, push it.
Meeting updates, meeting updates, so. That will be a good closer.
All right.
Uh, new business. Uh, Frank, you in the audience?
Yes, I'm here.
Request for a public property use special permit.
Should we give it a second while folks are leaving?
Yep.
Uh, Frank Bertolino, Maple Terrace, in here in Newbury. Um, I volunteer with the Maverick River Feline Rescue Society, and for the last three years, we've held our, um, strut slash run for strays here at the Upper Green, and we're, um, requesting, um, approval. We've received approval already from the, uh, fire department, fire chief and the, um, police chief to, uh, use the green again, and we're asking the selectmen to, for final permission, to use the green again for our strut slash run for strays, um, May.
May twenty-second, yep, two thousand sixteen, from nine o'clock to four P.M.
Yes, I, I put it as nine to four because we're technically really like eleven to two, but, you know, set up, clean up.
So, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I skipped discussion.
Thanks for being patient.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Frank.
Good luck.
Uh, we have, what happened? Ellen?
We have a motion to close the public hearing.
No, we continued it.
We continue.
We have to close tonight's meeting.
No.
I don't know.
We continue it, I think.
Let's make a motion, no, no, we're gonna continue, we're gonna stay on continuing.
Yeah, we're not gonna close it.
That is Robert rules, I think.
Yeah.
We'll leave it. If we're wrong, you got us. I'm gonna combine these if I can. These are two one-day liquor license by Field Community Arts Center. It is on December twelfth, two thousand fifteen, from seven thirty to ten thirty P.M. The, the next one would be December nineteenth, two thousand fifteen, from seven thirty to ten thirty P.M. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve both.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nick, did I first meet you in Ames three years ago? That was a long time ago. All right, so we have before us tonight a ability to discuss the possibility of the Larkin Bridge Road prepared for pedestrian and bicycle, and Nick, is this in coordination with the subdivision that's going on in Georgetown?
It is.
So, illuminate everyone in the audience to what's going on.
All right. For the record, Nick Cracknell, thirteen Picard Street in Amesbury, Mass. I'm the project coordinator for Livingston Development out of Tewksbury that has the property at sixty-six Parish Road or Larkin Road in the town of Georgetown under agreement. The De Lorenzo family owns the property. The, the property's located, uh, just off Larkin Road and Parish, I think where they meet. It has a Parish Road address in the town of Georgetown. It's one hundred percent in the town of Georgetown, but Larkin Road appears to be at least the pavement one hundred percent in the town of Newbury. Yep. Uh, we went to the planning board with this subdivision proposal, I think on the twenty-eighth of October for a pre-application conference, and what's being proposed or contemplated by my clients is a ten-lot, open space residential subdivision plan for the forty-two acre site. Uh, the ten lots are serviced by two, proposed to be serviced by two private lanes with private onsite water and septic, one acre approximate lots, three to four bedroom homes. Um, those ten lots fit on about twelve acres. Seventy-five percent of the site is proposed at this point to be deeded to the town as permanent open space. Uh, we do show an eleventh lot that we're proposing to plat, but donate plat, meaning show on the subdivision plan, but not actually build it and donate that to the town as part of the seventy-five percent open space for a tax deduction to make the whole deal work for both buyer seller, similar to what you might be able to think about with the folks that just left here. Um, it's an innovative way to make things work and get the public benefits without having some of the wetland impacts that we have in Georgetown with that eleventh lot. There's a lot of developable area. Here's the site here. I'm sure it's hard for you to see, but this is the entire site. There's Larkin Road coming in from Byford. So, the fire station's out here, you come around the bend, and there's the Wheeler Brook culvert that's been out for several years, that then hooks into Parish Road and comes into Georgetown right here, so Parish, Larkin, I ninety-five. Here's the forty, forty-two, forty-three acre site. This is the twelve acre area here along Larkin Street where we're proposing to have the two private ways, which I think was included in the back of the letter as an exhibit, but I can show you and you can squint. Uh, this is the, the preliminary subdivision plan that shows these two private lanes with the five structures. Here's the eleventh lot that again is not planned to be built on, but it does appraise it, it's approved as a building lot that has a note on the plan, a covenant that it will be donated to the town as open space, therefore mitigating the, not a wetland crossing, but encroachment on wet, a wetland system that goes into a perennial stream which then feeds into Wheeler Brook and moves north under Parish Road or Larkin Road. So, as part of our due diligence in developing this design, Christensen and Sergi are the engineers of record that have developed the preliminary subdivision plan. We're in the process of filing a definitive plan and asking for the special permit for the cluster development of the open space residential from the planning board in Georgetown. We're going to be asking the local conservation commission for a notice of intent or an order of conditions for a notice of intent. Uh, the entire project pretty much meets the Georgetown wetland regulations for what it's worth, and they happen to be the, some of the most stringent regulations in the North Shore. Uh, a conventional development here would, would have a harder time doing that with larger lots, larger roads, uh, in more impacts. We also will require, we believe, getting the Newbury Planning Board to sign off on the curb cut, the new curb cut to come into the second order, which is shown here, given Larkin Road is in the town of Newbury. So, we'll need a curb cut permit from whoever is the authority issuing that. It may be just Public Works, we're in the process of figuring that out. But when we did our pre-application conference on the twenty-eighth of October, one of the good questions that we anticipated came up from the Georgetown Planning Board, which is the status of Wheeler, the culvert at Wheeler Brook, and the status of what the town of Newbury would like to do and plans to do with that, uh, bridge culvert that's been out for several years. So, uh, members of our design team spoke with your Public Works Director, I believe it's Jim Charette, I don't know Jim personally, but he was approached on several occasions by both Christensen and Sergi and someone else on our design team about what the town's interests are, whether the town wants this reopened for vehicular traffic or what, given the status has been a closed crossing for several years. Uh, our impression to date is that Public Works and the neighbors both, on both sides, in Georgetown and on Larkin Road, and this is not all the neighbors that have been approached, but the ones we've spoken with, seem interested in not having that reopened for vehicular traffic. Uh, it's also our impression that Public Works and the town of Newbury has not budgeted funds to design a replacement culvert, uh, and I believe, again, I have not had first convers- first-person conversations with, uh, Mr. Charette, uh, but it seemed clear from our design team that his impression was the Public Works Department wasn't interested in having that reopen for vehi- vehicular traffic. So, we're, we're kind of looking for confirmation, number one, that the Board of Selectmen supports that informal recommendation, and we certainly would like to see the, uh, Public Works Department maybe provide you a formal recommendation. I, I had hoped to bring that tonight to you or put it in the package so it's clear what his position is, but I believe that to be his position. If in fact that's his position, what we have suggested we're willing to do as part of our development project is work with the town of Newbury to at least reopen that culvert for bicycle and pedestrian traffic. It's currently used now for pedestrian, uh, circulation from one neighborhood. It's a walking trail, a lot of folks on both sides use that road for walking. There's a lot less cut-through traffic, obviously, when you can't cut through with the, around the Jersey barriers. We're willing to finance a feasibility study exclusively by us, working with your Public Works Department, to look at the feasibility of removing the Jersey barriers and improving it for pedestrian and bicycle access. And we would also like some support from the Board of Selectmen before we go and do something like that, that you're supportive of that type of study. And then what we would agree to do if you support that kind of study is not only do it and work with your town officials, but also come back here when we're done with the study with a recommendation and a proposal to either fund it because we can afford to fund it, or share the funding costs with you, should they be more than we can afford to do. We don't know what they are right now 'cause we haven't done the feasibility study. So, that, that's kind of our proposal and our reason to be here is to get support from the Board of Selectmen for what we anecdotally understand the Public Works Director is suggesting the town would like to do. Number two, support us spending our monies to study with local officials, a pedestrian and bicycle connection through there, and then come back here with a proposal where we either fix it because we can afford to fix it, or we have a cost-sharing proposal because it's maybe more than we anticipated. So, that's really why we're here. We're hoping to hit the spring market in terms of constructability for these lots. We're filing our definitive subdivision plan this month in Georgetown with the special permit. We're also filing the notice of intent. We don't expect to get out of the permitting process in Georgetown in less than five or six months, but we want to be, we want to be out in May if we can. So, we'd like to have, and I know the town of Georgetown's gonna want some assurance from Newbury as to what's gonna happen there beyond us just saying it. So, we'd like to move relatively quickly here and come back, maybe even within a month, uh, maybe on the twenty-sixth of January with a proposal for what might work there so we can move forward.
Questions for Nick, guys?
Um, I wasn't able to see from the, from the little drawing that I have. So, this is the old Wheeler Brook Farm property that's on sort of the ninety-five side of Larkin Road, correct?
Correct.
It's sort of ninety-five.
Correct. Yeah. Um. Here's ninety-five.
Okay. And so, that'll be coming onto Larkin Road, you said, with two roads.
Two little. Sort of wide driveways.
Yeah.
Yep. Lane.
Almost, yeah, common drive, sort of.
Correct.
Idea. Um, now, this is kind of a bizarre question, but how would, those kids would naturally be enrolled in the Georgetown school system, and if we don't build the Larkin Road bridge, not the, the Wheeler Brook culvert back in, those kids will have to go all the way around down to Elm Street to get into Georgetown or up to Main Street?
That's a great question, and those questions we've got to resolve with the school department as well as the fire department. We know right now there's a house there that's empty and it's, it's condemnable, right?
Yeah.
But should it not be condemnable and there wasn't a subdivision and somebody just built a house there, these same questions would apply, and we'd have to figure out, obviously the kids would have to be picked up, and I don't think Georgetown can force you to fix your culvert, but I don't know that for sure, right? It's in your town, and that house is exclusively, that's there now, that's condemned, but that lot could be an A and R subdivision with, with maybe three or four houses on it. I think actually six would fit along there in an A and R configuration, approval not required.
Yeah.
So, we wouldn't need a lot of this. They could come in in twenty-one days or less, get a signature for six lots, and all those homes would have the same problem, and Georgetown would be forced to serve them one way or the other. Either work an agreement out with you, Georgetown fix the culvert, or Georgetown buses. You know, the fire department's the same now if there's a fire in that condemned house.
Yeah.
Somebody's putting it out, and it would be part of an intermunicipal agreement or something.
I just wasn't.
It's a great question. I don't know the answer. The kids may have to walk down and cross, but that's not a disaster either.
Like, are they gonna have a bus stop on the other side of where the culvert is currently?
Now, do you have to go to our planning board, Martha, does, Nick, do they have to come to us, to you?
I don't actually know that.
Nick, do you have to go to our planning board?
We're, we're guessing we do, but it's not a hundred percent because we just need a curb cut permit. I, we believe, yeah, sorry.
May I, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Okay. I do believe if you're going to build a subdivision there, you're coming across our roads, state law says yes, you do have to address us. This is coming from back in oh-four, when I played with that before, when it was industrial, it was gonna be going into that. I did look into that. As a matter of fact, I haven't seen you since oh-four when we worked on the trails when you were with the reports.
Likewise.
Good to see you again.
Likewise.
Um, I would like to address that bridge. I have had many, many discussions with the highway surveya on fixing that bridge. It is on the back burner for the sole reason we have a Main Street bridge that is in dire need of repair. That is our first site, right there. Okay. Then we're gonna focus on that bridge for the sole reason of a second access for fire, ambulance, and all other trucking. I really don't want that bridge out forever. I do want it for fire and ambulance access, especially if you're going to put ten, eleven houses out there. I'm going to seriously push to have that bridge fixed now.
Chuck, isn't it somewhere in the three-hundred thousand dollar range to fix it?
Depends on the type of bridge you go for. It really is, if you go with a culvert, it's eighty thousand. But can we get the culvert passed through there? Okay, that's a DEP question, and we'll have to go petition the DEP to put that in.
The long side of it with a box culvert was only about three hundred, right?
And, no, I think the box culvert was cheaper. I think they wanted the.
I'm not talking a lot of money to fix it.
But my point, where I'm going with this, is that if you're going to put money into fixing a bike or something path, I would much rather see you put money into fixing the bridge with us. Ten percent of it is in Georgetown, the rest of it is on us. And I would much rather see that plan and have a second egress for even school buses, you know, along with fire and ambulance.
And don't give up ten percent that quickly if they have to help build a bridge.
Right. It may be the solution here if it's not spending money on something that the town, that's why we're here.
Right.
That the Board of Selectmen don't want to see as a permanent condition, which is a non-vehicular accessed culvert or bridge. Maybe what we do is contribute money to the design, because there doesn't appear to be a design that's, that's been created, at least to the best of our knowledge. We have looked, we have asked local officials, suspecting there might be a design just without funding for construction, but there doesn't even appear to be a design yet for that bridge. I can imagine the permitting after the design is many, many months of wetland permitting, even if you choose the box culvert or bridge it, that, given my clients have an interest in constructing these homes next summer, probably what we could consider doing, if you think it's in our collective best interest, is fund some of the design, we'll get a number on what it would cost to design that crossing for vehicular traffic. And that might be our contribution, and you folks, when you're ready to build it, even though we might have a few years with ten other homes out there without the vehicular crossing, because the funding's not in place nor the permitting for the bridge.
Right.
We would be willing to look at that, we just need a pathway forward.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because one of my fears is if we put a, a pathway bridge there, we have a very, very small footprint in which to do so. Now we can't expand and fix the bridge because this is in the way.
I understand.
Okay.
Yeah, I understand.
Those are my fears.
Yep.
Okay, and personally, I'd like to see that bridge fixed, you know, I remember the fire department for many, many, many years, and I'm a firm believer in double access.
So, if, if that's the sense of the majority, if not.
I'm speaking for myself, yeah.
In giving us guidance, we would need from a majority, if not everybody.
Well, I have a question. What are the, are there any residents in, in Newbury that live on Larkin Road that this will be affected by?
Oh, absolutely.
Yes. Oh, yeah, to reopen that, and some of them might not want to see it reopen but for other reasons. It's very private down there now, it's a cul-de-sac. So, their life has gotten very quiet and bucolic.
Except for the people at the end with all the turnarounds, I'm sure.
Yeah, I mean, I spoke with the guy at the end and he doesn't mind it. It's, it's pretty quiet again, as I say. That doesn't mean the right solution for the community isn't to, to deal with the public safety aspects and circulation.
It's a concern.
Yeah.
Adding more, more houses and having no greater access.
Right.
I mean, I would, if we're going to move forward with fixing the road, I'd love to have, if it's possible, a, a, some, well, I guess it's not used enough that it matters. I was thinking having, you know, a sidewalk or something along the culvert so that you could be off the road when, when people are, you know, I jog the road now and just jump over the, everything. Which is not necessarily the safest thing to do, but having a bike lane or something on, in what's designed so that pedestrian traffic is, is safe through there, especially as there will be more with ten new houses. There will be a lot of kids and so on and so forth. Making that generally safer, I think, is in our interest.
Yeah, I think we're allowed one-third the width for expansion, if I remember it correctly. I'd have to research, I wouldn't want to stake my life on that. But I think we're pretty close to that, having been through that with other roads. So, yeah, I'm glad to open a discussion on it myself. Personally, I'd love to sit down and discuss it with you. I, I can't talk to everybody else, but.
You like?
I like the idea of opening up a discussion and getting that open again.
And for vehicular traffic?
I think that would be best.
I would prefer vehicular traffic. I, I, we should be maintaining our roads, not closing them down.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry to leave because I've been drinking gallons of water all day, but is Georgetown going to ask you to restore some vehicular traffic there as part of the conditions for the subdivision because of Mutual A?
I don't know the answer to that, but I would, I would just, to posit a scenario, I would find it doubtful that Georgetown would, would hold my clients hostage for a couple of years, which is what, it would probably kill the deal for these folks to even buy the property and contribute anything. If they have to wait two years to design it, to fund it, even three-hundred thousand dollars is a, is a heavy price, even if that's the, the high end for a ten-lot subdivision where there isn't a lot of infrastructure and the sellers aren't giving away the land, right? Everybody knows there's three parties to an agreement when you have off-site improvements. So, I would guess just from a permitting and design and permitting standpoint, let alone the constructability of when you can get in there and build that, that you're talking at least eighteen months, and that's, it could be eighteen months to two years before that vehicular access would be available. And you need approvals from both towns, just on that particular aspect, and two-town meetings to even authorize somebody else to spend the money on your property. That, it has to be a couple of years, and I can't believe you guys would wait till twenty-eighteen to start your project. It's a completely different market, right? So, I don't think Georgetown, they might say it, and they might want it, but it, it's not realistic to ask for it and expect it to be given when these folks are not going to be there a day later. So, I think the right solution is to ask these folks for a reasonable contribution to move both towns forward in dealing with something that's clearly broken that you want to bring back, and the public interest is getting some funding from these folks that's good money for, for the end product versus good money after bad because we're taking apart a pedestrian crossing that we no longer want in three or four years, in the manner at which we would likely design it, which wouldn't be hanging off where nothing is currently.
And you know from city planning, though, Chuck, Nick does.
Yeah.
Your first statement is, we probably have a bridge that is of higher priority than where we stand now.
Yes.
So, we'd have to think about all the variable, concomitant variables that go into this, because if you're going to make a minimal contribution to maybe putting us forward on that, and we have a bridge that could have much more extreme exposure, we're going to have trouble making a lot of promises before doing a lot of, you know, speculative thinking.
I mean, I think the ten houses can clearly go there in, in the absence of that vehicular crossing. Does it make a, a less, a suboptimal situation worse? Probably, but is it unsafe i- in a significant manner to have ten houses there without? Meaning, if the occupancy permits start getting issued next fall for the first house, a year later for the rest of them, and the bridge is going to take at least two years to make it through design and permitting, even in a perfect world, I don't think there's a significant public safety aspect of having those homes constructed.
I think Georgetown Fire would argue that.
So do I.
Well, what it, what it will mean if that's in fact the case, and if the Georgetown Fire Department argues that.
Right.
Then there are no houses, there is no development, and there is no financial assistance to either town in getting it fixed. So that's really the trade-off.
Yeah. I would much, I'd really love to further discuss that. I'll call James in the morning myself and have him call Peter and get discussions going.
Perfect.
Okay.
That, that's appreciated.
All right.
And I'll give you, my point of contact is, should be on the letter, but Tracy has it, Martha has it, you can find me, and I'll make sure the right person on my team is in the room.
And what are you going to start to work through the planning board in Georgetown? Are you already there?
We're already in front of them, we've already been in front of them in October. We're filing a definitive subdivision plan.
Okay.
You know, we're at the point where the plan is pretty much inked enough that we can file it as a definitive with a special permit application. So this, this is an issue we've got to put on the front burner to make sure it isn't a showstopper.
Well, they're going to take, and we're going to know what their expectations are pretty soon too, because they're going to have some conditions for you guys.
At, at least preliminarily. I mean, like I, I think I said maybe while you were out of the room, we're expecting at least six months of permitting in Georgetown. Formal permitting, we're doing, we're just finishing the informal. So, we're going to need some guidance relatively soon from you folks, as well as them, on what we're going to do with this thing, and whether there's a deal or this is a deal breaker, because it really is that simple, that they're not going to wait two years, so we can't have that bridge open for cars or buses or fire trucks before the first house gets built. That won't work, right?
I mean, I don't think, that's not.
They're, they're the client.
But Nick, that's not our decision.
It, it'll be both. It's your bridge, and if Georgetown, because it's, it's two communities talking to one another.
Right.
They're, they're going to, they're going to, we're all here to work together to figure out if there's a way to get something for the, for the public benefit out of this project.
Yeah, we understand.
Just, there's a reason this property's sat through two strong economic cycles, and that culvert is part of the problem, because asking somebody to fix it as part of a fairly modest project is uneconomic.
I followed it along, and one of the biggest stumbling blocks was taking it out of industrial zone, putting it into residential. I think it had to go through different town meetings to get that through. It, it was contentious.
And it went through, and it went through litigation because of the density as well. There were three plans submitted after the rezoning.
I've been keeping an eye on it, yeah.
So it, it's been a long haul for the Dillrenzel family. I was the town planner at Georgetown when that was ending up, and saw a lot of those plans, but.
Nick, let me have a card for you, will you?
I will.
So do we want to make a decision to recommend that they design a repair for the culvert with an expanded, or do we want to hold off on?
I think we should have, excuse me, I'm sorry. I think we should have James's input solidly on that before we make a decision, because he, he's the one who's in charge of bridges and roads.
And I think we, as a board, need to watch how Nick and the applicants file through the processing in Georgetown.
So do we want to ask them to come back?
And I mean, certainly, depending on whether they have to go to our planning board or not, I mean, we don't know, and it might never happen, and it would scare you guys, but as done in many subdivisions, as we know from Livingston Lane and other ones, they might ask the applicants to fix the bridge.
See that, I'm sorry.
As part of the ability to build the subdivision.
Okay.
Did you hear that, Chuck?
Negative, I'm sorry.
All right. We don't know, and we're jumping the gate a little bit, if we don't wait as they file through their process, Georgetown might ask the applicants to fix the bridge.
Right.
We might not have to pay for it.
Right, and they, they haven't asked that, so this is really, I want to just reiterate, they haven't asked that when we've been in front of the planning board yet. That doesn't mean they won't, okay? However, since we were under the impression from conversations from our team to James, that, that, if that's Mr. Charette that you're referring to.
Yes, yeah.
That he, he did not want to see vehicular access. So maybe we got it all wrong. Again, I never had a firsthand conversation with James, probably should have, in retrospect, because I'm standing here.
Mm-hmm.
Understanding his position, at least preliminarily, not speaking for you, not speaking for the town of Newbury, but speaking as an official that's in charge of these things, we were under the impression vehicular access, coming here tonight, you read the letter, and the letter says what our impression was. And the town of Georgetown knows through the planning board what that impression was from, from James. If the town of Georgetown wants the road open to approve this and these guys to pay for it, or the town of Newbury wants the, the bridge replaced and these guys to pay for it, I think what they're saying is, that's not going to work for them, and we'll need to get to that answer relatively fast, in both towns.
So maybe engineering and find out what that cost is. If that cost is eighty grand, or if it's sixty grand.
Big difference from three hundred.
I mean, we ought to find out if it's three, you know, so I mean, you can't really talk way out ahead till we see where Georgetown is going to take you guys.
Right. But what's, it doesn't make any sense. What's really helpful about this conversation tonight is hearing at least from a majority, if not all of you, that the preference of all of you, or at least a majority, is that it be open for vehicular traffic. That's different than what I believe we've heard. That's why we're here, that's why we needed that clarity. That changes the equation in our homework going back and doubling back with you and James and the folks over in Georgetown to figure out if this is a project that's going to work.
Yep.
So we appreciate your candor.
And that certainly, Nick, doesn't mean that this town probably isn't willing to partner, whether you guys are expected to pay for the whole thing for the subdivision or we partner, but, you know, we were talking like ten percent in the beginning here, because it's in Newbury and ten percent in Georgetown or whatever. We need to see what occurs.
Yeah.
It's a process, and.
We're not saying no.
Right. And I think it's a great idea, thank you.
No, appreciate it. So, my card, did it make it to you?
Yeah, I have it.
So, give me an email or a call tomorrow and I'll set up a meeting, and we'll come back as soon as we can to, at least in January, we'll come back to see if we still have a project, and we have some ideas with some preliminary cost estimates. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Nick.
Thank you.
Good seeing you guys.
You too. That's where having some prior time on planning boards tells me a lot can happen before we have to do anything. We have appointments. The appointments are emergency management responders, and those responders are James Valonis and John Baker. Is John Lucy here to speak to this? Is John a police officer?
Wake up, John.
Right now, he's a emergency communications operator.
Okay. And James Valonis, obviously, a police officer?
Yeah, he's a reserve police officer. The EMA responders are people that you can dispatch or have involved in any more local emergencies with the specialized equipment that you have. They'll be trained in the operation and deployment of that equipment. They fall under emergency management director.
So they have to have good training and all that?
Yeah, we give training in that. John Baker, he's one of our newest guys, but he's proven to be very proficient. He has a lot of experience with ATVs and special equipment.
Great.
And Jim's been with us, he knows what he's doing.
All right.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, a motion to approve, both.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Johnny.
These are new business license applications. We need to review a proven sign. The first one is Elizabeth and Michael Houlihan, and that's the Roots to Wings facility on Newport Turnpike. And I did go out to their opening, and it's a marvelous facility, and it's really an asset to that area, which is certainly starting to have a holistic feel to it with all the other development around it, so I would entertain.
They were open now, I remember when they were here, didn't they?
It's, it's wide open, it's good. So, I would entertain a motion.
You have one.
Then do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Michael Hou, how do you pronounce that one, guys?
Miss Louie.
How?
Miss Louie.
Miss Louie, and the idea's clothing company, two-twenty Middle Road, it's a general business, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think probably to expedite things on the next ones, which are renewals, I would just read down them, and if you want to hold one out for any reason, just make a, a noise. All right, so this is Steve Service Station, fifty-two Main Street, Byfield Class Two Used Car Dealers. Steve is Service Station, twenty-two Main Street, Byfield Auto Repair and Sales. DBS Wheelhouse Parking, three, thirty-nine Northern Boulevard, it's a parking lot with a popcorn machine, slush machine, and water.
I'd want to talk about that one.
Okay. Is this, this was a renewal, right? It's been there before, obviously, Ellen.
I'm sorry, yeah.
It's a re, it's renewed, yeah. Little River Realty Trust, seventeen Newbury Turnpike. Edelrude, or Edelrude Conference and Retreat Center.
Adeline Rude.
Adel Rude. Can't, do I have three, three shots at it? Newport Kayak and Canoe, Toman Automotive, and Pitter Taxpayers Association. So we have a hold on one before we can make a motion to accept all. So, what's the discussion?
Well, we talked previously about asking some of the people who have parking lots on Plum Island to start providing trash facilities. I don't think this is something we do as part of business renewal, but I just wanted to ask how and when we might make that sort of change if we ask the people with parking lots there to do that, so.
Before we go a little further with that, Ellen, this is Jerry Doors. Is this the actual parking lot that includes the popcorn machine, slush and water machine? Or is it the popcorn machine and slush and?
Parking lot.
It is the parking lot that includes those.
So I just, I don't know the answer to that question, it was just what occurred to me as we were. So I just, I don't know the answer to that question, it was just what occurred to me as we were
My first thought with that is, it's a private entity. How can we govern what they do with their trash? They either have someone pick it up. If they don't, and it makes a mess, we fine them. As far as I know, that's as far as we can go. I don't believe we could put, I don't know.
Restrictions or requirements on it?
Well, what, what Damon's saying is, we are approving a business license.
Right.
And at certain times, it might behoove the well-being of the town, the neighborhood, to ask them to do something if they want their license. So, I don't know if this is the exact time to do it, especially when we have the Plum Island committee.
Is this a renewal?
It's a renewal.
If it was a new one, then I can see where we would step in. But whereas it's a renewal, I think we're being a little audacious here.
Well, I mean, like I said, it's discussion, and I don't think it's discussion wrongly taken.
Right.
Because with the Plum Island Committee coming up, and is, we'll discuss a little later tonight, probably by January, we'll be up and going. So that might be a time, Damon, to start to look at those things.
You can have those things. Yeah, I don't, I just wanted to bring it up because I feel like there may be something we want to be looking at with these parking lots on Plum Island, the private ones, and how can they help alleviate some of the problems we're seeing? And should we be asking them to do so? Whether or not we ask them, or we try to garner the authority to tell them, is entirely a separate matter. But I just wanted to discuss it. So I'm, unless anyone else has anything further to say, I'm happy to approve it. I just wanted to
Not well taken, and I think, I think Chuck's right too. Alicia?
I like, I kind of like the idea, but I'd like to ask around and see how other municipalities handle that, if they make a requirement of, of parking lots to have. I mean, to me, it's a good, good business. You, you have public barrels, like going to the ga, the gas station. Fill up your car, and there's always a trash barrel there. But I would like to see if, if
Anyone else has similar things?
Especially the city of Boston comes to my, to my head.
We don't even really know if years ago, when all these parking lots became before us, it was a requirement for them to have trash barrels, because we haven't even read that in their business permit.
It's been twenty years since I've done rubbish down there, but I used to have a dumpster each and every parking lot, and they would pay me themselves.
So we don't even know if in the original
Right.
So let's
And the great thing, they may have, it may be, there's something that they're supposed to be providing already.
So let's, let's, let's approve this and go along with, so is there a motion to approve?
Uh, yeah, motion to approve all, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we're going to do the same thing with the liquor license renewal applications, and the two thousand sixteen licenses as follows. Unless we have to have an individual motion on each for any reason, do you think, Ellen? Because it's a liquor license, I thought there could be two. So, we'll take Parker River first. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Is there discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Old Town Country Club on Parker River? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Is this paradigm or preridum? How do you pronounce that?
Paradigm.
Paradigm. Paradigm Beverage Inc., doing business there as corner cupboard. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Savannah Vich, Family Associates, DJ Liquors.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pizza Factory, doing business Plum Island provisions.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Plum Island Fine Wine and Spirits.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
PGS Variety.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Plum Island Grill.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Putree?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Old and Big Golf Club?
Motion to approve.
I'm second, sorry, I was so long the draw there.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Plum Island Beach Coma?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, we will make a motion by what we just did to sign all those. Board of Health.
No.
What?
The renewal certification for the ABCC, that's a separate.
Oh, what is that?
It's a renewal certification that states how many licenses we have and what type of license.
We had to do that last year, so. Motion.
Motion to sign the ABC two thousand sixteen renewal certification?
Second motion.
Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're going to be into old business. Board of Health is considering instituting a three hundred dollar fine for littering townwide, and has therefore requested a vote of confidence from the Board of Selectmen. I do have a new wrinkle to that. GENE has given us a ruling, and it said, since the, since the fines are set by bylaw, they can only be changed by amending the bylaw, which has to be done at a town meeting. So
Oh.
I would imagine that the Board of Health would have to make a motion to, you know, amend the bylaws and take it to town meeting. That would be the Board of Health then, if they're going to try to still do it. So that would be the venue.
Sounds good to me.
Sounds good to me.
They're still looking for a recommendation from us, either way.
No, that's a good point.
They want to see if the, if the board is behind the action or against it.
Let's discuss it. So, make a motion. Make, make some sort of motion to provide insight.
I'll move that the Board of Selectmen give a vote of confidence to the Board of Health in regards to their increase of the townwide littering fine.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And here's the discussion. Damon? No, Chuck?
Go ahead, Chuck.
Yeah, I have had quite a few people come up to me and say, okay, the fines at a hundred. How many fines have they instituted at a hundred that would warrant this in, this increase? So in other words, if they're giving out fines at a hundred, is it not working? And they have to have it increased to three hundred? What is their reasoning? And a lot of people have been quizzing me on that, so. I, I don't know the answer to that.
It's a good question.
Alicia?
I, um
Jeff, we have a hand up in the audience.
I have John, Mike was going to look in to see what the surrounding area towns do for their fines for littering. Do you know if we had an opportunity to do that?
I do not.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to find out what the surrounding towns are doing. And I'll say it before, and I'll say it again. I am very hesitant to do anything, especially on Plum Island, without giving those people that go down to Plum Island, not the residents, but anybody who is down there, the tools they need to handle their problems. That's personally the way I feel.
This is a townwide, not just the island, right?
I know, but I know it's, it's mostly on Plum Island right now, is the issue. Can I have one of these questions?
Yeah, please do.
What are the surrounding, what is the fine for the surrounding towns? Thank you, Chuck.
Jay, did you have something you wanted to say to them?
I can see merit in raising the fine. You know, the elevated consequences for different offenses you can commit in your lifetime might keep you from doing certain things. You know, it's assault opposed to murder. I know that's a, that's way out there, but you know what I mean.
Damon?
I was wondering if, John, you have any sense, or it's easy to find out, how many tickets are written right now for littering in the town?
I have a sense, and I can't give the statistics. My sense is probably a couple, three or four a month. Thank you, Chuck.
Huh. And Jeff, as the last member of the board, I think three hundred is probably a little too much. I wouldn't mind having that as a third offense. So maybe a hundred, two hundred, three hundred. Now, was there someone in the audience that would like to speak? Do you mind coming up and to the?
No.
Just, and tell us who you are. Television can't hear you from here.
I'm Patrice Allen, and I was at the Board of Health meeting where this was discussed, and it arose out of the dog poop bags and the waste at the top of Plum Island Boulevard that was occurring. And the chairman expressed that he wished the fine to be increased as a way to minimize the trash. What we, those of us who are there and hearing people and their comments, which is not an official or scientific study, is that it will make people more angry and that behavior change might be better served by appealing to people's better half of how do we preserve our pristine and wonderful beaches? And that, no, we do not have the solution at this moment. We do not have the correct receptacles, but we will and are planning to address it. And until it's solved, would everyone kindly do their best to eliminate trash? And that fining one person may just inflame it further. And right now, we're seeing some sort of protest movements of people collecting dog waste and hurling it out the window, along the marsh, along the causeway, as a protest. So
What are they protesting, just out of curiosity?
Just the fact that there is no receptacles and there are rules. I don't understand all of it, I'm just noting it as I see it. So, my theory at the meeting with a couple of others who were at it was, why don't we try the positive approach, maybe with some small signs that just appeal to people's better nature until the committee is formed and some things are addressed? That was, that's it.
Which I think is, is great, thank you. Before you speak, John, can someone clarify for me, maybe some island residents too? Uh, Chuck, if you can remember. Did we, did the Plum Island Foundation continue to have the dumpster there all year long? Or was it taken out after the summer?
It was taken out because of plowing reasons, I'm quite, I'm pretty sure it was taken out.
So was it taken out last year and the year before?
I don't know exactly, but I seem to remember they had to remove it, because that's where they plowed this now.
Right.
Actually, the Plum Island Foundation was told by the Board of Health, I may get the dates wrong, very recently, that they had to remove it because someone had, I think the last horrendous moment was someone had dumped a sofa there. And although they were trying, they'd increased it to a twice-a-week pickup. There were people who were violating it at such a level
Yes.
that it had become an issue. It did leave hard feelings because they were going to try and address that and continue having it there until funding ran out and sort of extend the amount of weeks, but they were told they had to remove it that week.
Which, which I appreciate it, but my question was,
I'm sorry.
Historically, don't we lose the dumpster down there in winter months anyway?
No, it was always there.
It was always there.
The pickup, the pickup time was less. It was usually once a week in the winter, but they'd increased it to twice a week in the summer because of, frankly, there's been just a very big increase in the number of people using that part of the beach in the last two years, and this year especially.
So, my question is, when they used to plow down there, did they plow around the dumpster? Or they plow the dumpster in?
They plow side to side. I never, actually, it's interesting, yeah, they plowed right, so you had to walk over a mountain to get to the beach.
Okay.
All right, well, this is some of the
And, and it was removed for some of that winter. I mean, I think it was taken away during the February, yeah.
It was more than just a sofa, it's
No, I'm not, I don't know.
Blatant abuse of a dumpster that I have ever seen. And, as I say, twenty years ago, I used to do the rubbish down there on a Board of Health contract. And it was a blatant abuse then, it's a blatant abuse now.
I was only speaking to the very final straw, not that I even have a clear understanding of the whole process. I wasn't a part of it.
Thank you so much. John Lucy?
Just to speak to you a little bit. Actually, I agree with some of your thoughts on how to approach the problem as it is right now. We've been really trying to keep an eye on what's going on with the dog waste. That is the biggest problem we're having out there, believe it or not. And people are taking it, piling it up at the kiosks, or they're taking it in their car when no one's looking, tossing it onto the, onto Plum Island Turnpike. What I might propose to the board to consider is, the one advantage you have is the violators are a very targeted, a very exclusive group. The people that walk the dogs on the beach. Maybe signage, one sign at the center, reminding of the, of the privilege that's in jeopardy if this practice continues, could be impactful along the same spirit of what you're saying to kind of apply that plea to their, you know, their, their better side. Because they're, they're ones that are putting themselves in peril. They're, they're the ones that are walking the dogs on the beach. They're the ones that are taking the waste off the beach, thank you for that. They're also the ones that are dropping on the center and dropping on the, on the turnpike. So if they see some indication that, you know what? If we don't stop this bad behavior, this privilege of bringing our dogs on the beach can be removed. Not say will, but it's at the discretion of the board to propose that sanction. And, and if they're not just policing themselves, maybe they'll police each other as well. You know, they'll start cleaning up after their, their peers.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Why can't we put trash barrels down there?
But putting dog waste in trash barrels is a problem of itself too. I mean, that's
And as I say, it, it's open for abuse also. They treat it like a mini dumpster. You know, and the next thing you know, you're going to have a chair sitting on top of the barrel. It's just the way it is. And it's sad, but it's true.
Do we have trash cans in any other public a, access or recreation areas in town?
Yes, boat ramp, Byfield Park, the park on
Do we, do we
Kerson Drive.
Do we have a, do we have a trash barrel at our landing now?
I don't think so.
No.
I saw one just the other day when I was down there.
Really?
Yeah, I threw something in it.
It would be a question for the harbor master.
Yeah. But you know what, I think you're right. I think right down by the trailer, I think there is one there.
Yeah, I threw a coffee cup in it, at least I hope it was the right one I put, right?
That was you?
Hate to be
That's for police only.
So if we have barrels, trash barrels, if the town has trash barrels in other parts of the town, to try to help or just alleviate a little bit of the problems down Plum Island until this committee is up and formed?
I believe it is an interdepartmental courtesy from the highway department to other departments to do that. I don't believe it is a right. I think out of the goodness of their hearts, they go out and empty those.
So maybe we could ask them out of the goodness of their hearts to do that on the island just until we can form this committee and solve some of the issues down, down Plum Island. It's just a thought.
I'm sensing some hesitation to supporting this. So what I was thinking I might do is move to table this until we have a recommendation from the committee which we were forming in January, which part of their charge is going to be addressing how to deal with the Center Island issue, which is what is moving this forward. So, does that make sense?
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, I move to table the recommendation of a vote of confidence until we have a recommendation from our as-of-yet-unformed committee.
And also, I want to hear back from what other communities are doing as far as fines go.
Do I have a second?
I'd like to just make one more quick comment, because I'm bothered by something. Hurling dog waste out of your window does not make you a protester, it makes you a slob.
And you know something, Jay, it doesn't make you want to run down and put barrels there.
No, it does not.
Of hurling the dog waste out. So
The dog waste, hurling the dog waste isn't the reason why I want to put barrels down there, but
And I didn't mean it, because you said barrels.
I know, I know, but I, I just think that, shame on them.
I mean, we do have what appears to be a roadmap in place. We will be probably illuminating as part of the end of this old business what we're going to do with the Plum Island Committee, when we expect it to be implemented. I would hate to be taking away some of the thought that they're going to put into what they're going to do.
Yep, makes sense.
Especially during the winter. There was a hand I saw.
Yes. Jim Moran, one oh four Elm Street. I'm proposing that the Board of Health has a great idea, and maybe the number should be five hundred dollars for fines, and signs be posted. Keeping in mind that giving out tickets is extremely difficult to do because you can't police them twenty-four hours a day. And I'm sure that's probably why there's a short number of tickets or citations issued. But if, if the signs are there and have teeth to them and occasionally people are caught, whether they pay the five hundred dollars or not, that would be up to the jurisdiction to decide whether they charge them a hundred dollars because of some reason. But if flags, big red flag with signs there, that this is a serious issue, we take it seriously, and cleaning up no matter what waste it is, it's critical all of the time. Now, if you want to just put the teeth into it at Plum Island rather than the rest of the town, the point is, if you put some teeth there when it does happen.
Right.
That's only my comment. Obviously, we all want the same thing to keep the town clean.
The reason we're at the three hundred is that is the sky limit that we can go to without going through legislation. If you go higher than that, you have to file all kinds of crazy stuff.
State legislation?
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I would truly support the three hundred even if it has to go to town meeting. And put some big signs down there, anything you can do, because the policing of it is extremely difficult.
Yep.
Well, there was a code enforcement officer proposed at the past town meeting that was.
Tabled.
Right. And informed this committee and hopefully.
How, how it's implemented becomes a separate problem. But step one could certainly be, for cheap money, put up a bunch of signs for three hundred dollars.
I, I like John's idea of, you know, put it up there. If this crap continues, we're gonna take away your right to bring your dog here.
And, and putting up signs with good messages.
Yeah.
Just supports.
Kind of like that idea.
Thank you.
Yep.
You know, it's funny, um, it seems that a lot of the abuse happens at Center Island. And I mean, the folks that live on the island, do you see all these trash bags and dog bags full of, um, dog excretion? Are they on every right of way all the way down the beach?
No.
Oh, my goodness, it's only at Center Island.
And down the turnpike.
And down the turnpike.
Camera?
Well, it's also, you, you begin to wonder that, you know, the difference for, and I can't say it to be true, but it's probably not the people that own homes on Plum Island that are causing the problem.
I seriously doubt that.
Wow. So anyway, maybe John, like Chuck said, has a good idea. We could look into funding for a sign that at least warned beyond what the sign in place warns, that, um, disposing of dog poop in the way we're doing it on Center Island could cause Center Island as an access to be closed to walking dogs. So, or something like that. We could look into that. We could think about this till our next meeting and discuss it again.
All right.
As part of the table and procedure that you had in place.
Mr. Chairman, there is a motion on the table that has not been seconded. I will second it.
Any other discussion? Yes. You've done a great job.
I'm sorry, can I have your last name again? Alan, A-L-L-E-N. My concern is what, 'cause we watch this and those of us who care actually go and pick it up weekly, is that they will just throw it further down the beach before, when they're walking their dog. And so it won't all be in one place for those of us who are taking it off the beach at this point right now. And it just makes it harder to get off the beach.
I commend you for trying to clean this up.
And that's a really good point. It seems to always be, if someone's gonna do something that's gonna be extremely negative, there seems to always be a way to do it. So.
More sneaky.
The motion's been made, it's been seconded. Any other discussion by the board? All those in favor of table it?
Aye. Boy, we got off track on that one.
It's okay.
No, it's all part of the same conversation.
What do you think the Plum Island Committee is gonna be like? Discussing regarding the change of venue for the four twenty-six fifteen annual town meeting from Newbury Elementary School gym to Triton High School auditorium. We continued this discussion from eleven twenty-four fifteen. If we're gonna do something like this, it will take a motion, I imagine, to do this. Do we need a motion to reopen this when it's tabled, Ellen? No. So, go ahead, guys. Any other discussion at this point?
Oh, I had a, a meet this selectmen's morning, Monday morning. And I asked, it was about a dozen people came, and I asked, I took some notes. And one of the things, um, that was brought up was, I asked what their opinion was on moving the town meeting, the annual town meeting to Triton Auditorium because of the acoustical reasons for what the media committee wants. And they weren't not in favor, in favor of it. They would like to keep it and, at N E S. And one person even suggested moving it to Saturday morning, have the annual town meeting on a Saturday morning so more people can show.
That's interesting, isn't it?
The point, um, was that there's a lot of older folks coming off Plum Island, and they don't like to drive at night. And I'll know, I've driven, I go to Triton all the time, it's very dark. So, got some feedback on that.
Maybe we should put that as one of the articles on the warrant for the next town meeting and let the people on the floor decide.
About moving to Saturdays?
No, we're moving, changing the venue.
Well, for, for four twenty-six fifteen, which is this annual town meeting.
Right.
I think we have to make a motion of what we're gonna do for our annual town meeting. It's been my feeling all along that, especially after listening to Damon about the stage and everything else.
Yeah, I got the same feedback.
I guess I kind of like the gym. And maybe we'll have to buy another camera for the guys.
No, it's the acoustics, it's the sound. It's audio, you just heard it's audio.
I can't hear you in there, the wizard.
Do you want to come out, Caleb, to speak?
Come on out, Caleb.
Uh, the issue is.
Can you wave it, wave it?
You have to go to the microphone.
Oh, that's funny.
My, um.
This is the wizard. This is the wizard, guys.
Uh, the recent cable mobile, I live in one sixty-nine Cross Street Rally.
But tell them who you are.
And I run the, the, the T program for the channel, uh, the.
I E Wizard.
Media production, uh, media, whatever, I can't even speak right now.
Actor.
Whatever, I run the channel for the town, I can't even think right now. But anyways, the reason why I think we should do that is because the audio is so, well, nah, a little bit. The audio is so terrible in that gym that I have really great hearing and I can be able to hear what happens half the time. And once everybody starts talking and it just starts bouncing off the walls, I prefer to have it in the auditorium if you're gonna do it, because at least this acoustics is better. So if you're wearing hearing aids and you're eighty-five years old, how are you supposed to be able to hear what's happening in that gym? Because let's be honest, the audio is terrible. And I've gotten better mics and the sound is better, but it's still not that great.
And you feel it's more of the shape of the room than?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's meant for, if you notice, it's all, it's metal on the ceilings and it's all cinder block. So, sound, what it does is it bounces off.
So, a proper?
Would have, it would have, it would have deadening sound stuff on the walls, um, to help deaden the, 'cause thing is with sound, it bounces off walls. And then it just goes, once it bounces off the wall, it comes back through the microphone. It makes a giant circle and that's what causes feedback. So, essentially, that's the huge issue. And this fall town meeting, the audio was awesome, because it was in a room that actually has good acoustics, which was the auditorium at the Round School. So that's, I, I brought up the high school thing because they're set up for video. The high school students would help with video and audio, so you're getting the school to help with town meeting, getting them maybe involved in town politics. And, um, because, let's be honest, they probably know nothing about this stuff, 'cause I sure didn't when I was in high school. So I think it'd be great for, for everybody, you know? It'd make for better end product and get the high school involved and the students involved in town politics, so. That's my two cents. And, uh, yeah.
Thank you, Caleb.
Caleb, thanks.
Yeah, I'll get back to you.
No, one thing is, Caleb is extremely good at what he does and really part of the team. We have a very, very, very important town meeting coming up, our annual town meeting. From day one, I didn't want to change the location. So, at least for me, with the municipal building and some of the ramifications of that at our annual town meeting, I'd like to keep the location the same, the confusion the same, and all the other things that people could say we did to screw it up the same. And if this is an issue and I, and Caleb certainly is good at what he does, we can further address this. But I think for this annual town meeting, we should vote, if it needs a vote, or if we're just having discussion, to keep the location the same. That's my two cents.
We could, um, we could bring it up at the annual town meeting.
Yeah, like I said, put it in an article, let them vote on it.
Well, not even, not even think we need, well, maybe.
And the other thing we could do is ask the media committee if there are things that we can do to ameliorate in the meantime, since we are planning to have, it sounds like, the, the meeting stay at its original location. You know, can we get a system to wire to people's, you know, give people those little boxes they have at theater sometimes so that they can, their hearing aids won't be distorted? Or, you know, can we do some sound deadening there? Or is it, you know, look at that, what can be done to improve the situation there for this year without considerable expense?
How about, um, if the venue does get moved? Because I really like Caleb's idea about teaching the young kids that democracy is not a spectator sport. How about asking the Council on Aging for volunteers that would drive or shuttle folks to the annual town meeting?
Yeah.
I think it's all good discussion, but I think we need to focus on where we want this one to be.
Oh, I think it has to be here.
That being said, we've got time to discuss some of these things. I mean, Damon and you heard from a relative cross-section of the town?
Most of mine was from.
And certainly, a lot of people didn't like the change in location. So maybe we should have a broader discussion and do a little more work on what the town would like. Because the centrality of that location to a lot of people is very important when in the past, we've sometimes worried about a quarrel.
Yep.
And, you know, for some of the people that haven't been going to town meetings for ages and ages and ages, and I don't mean the board, but, you know, they're just used to doing stuff. And there's been some pretty low numbers at town meetings, right? As we look back. So, and you know what? That doesn't mean that going over to Triton won't make more people.
Yeah.
We don't really know, right?
We don't know, but we should just think about it, so.
I like the idea of bringing it up, like you said.
Yep.
At town meeting.
So, right now, our focus should be, are we gonna change it or are we gonna leave it the same? That's what we need to vote tonight, right?
Yeah.
I don't even know if we need to vote.
Yeah, it's discussion. We never, we were gonna vote to change it if we were gonna change it. Do you want to speak?
We don't have to not change it.
Go ahead.
Just one thing, I was at, my Mark Allen, I'm from Plum Island, Old Broadway. One of the, one of the other discussions, as Alicia said, was just as important as location being Triton out in the middle of nowhere with no streetlights, was having a dius where the, the board of selectmen and the finance committee and the moderator are on a raised platform over the rest of the group. And there's even discussion about, that's not the way it is in the senate of, of, of the state of, of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. That's not the way it should be in Newbury. So there was, there was a lot of, you know, it, it was, I had never thought of something like that, but.
We, we didn't either, but when we did it.
It was just the location. When we're in the gym, we are on that level.
Absolutely, and that's why people like the gym.
So it's not by design?
Yeah, I didn't, I forgot to mention that.
They really liked having everybody on the same level as opposed to being, felt like they were being.
Huh.
Talked down to.
Looked down to. And, and Damon, you heard the same thing, correct?
Yes, a lot of people said that.
We, we discussed that last time, because the Triton location is the same way.
It will be the same way, yeah.
Yeah, open format.
So, meaning it's on a, it's on a stage.
Raised platform, yeah.
So, that's one of the things we discussed when we, but we're gonna keep it for this town meeting. Go ahead, Jim.
Comment, it seems to have two very important issues. One being location, I hear three locations. The school, Brown Elementary School gym, Brown Elementary School auditorium, and Triton High School. The first thing I'd want to know is, do those three venues provide enough space for the number of people that come to the town meeting? Do we know?
Yeah, well, I know that the, the town administrator looked at Triton's high school and.
Well, let's, let's, I guess, go to the first one.
The annual, the annual town meeting goes to gymnasium because it usually is a larger venue.
A larger venue. Now, will the auditorium at the Brown School hold enough people? Because the auto, audio aspects of that appear to be ten times better than your gymnasium. But there's no sense in holding it there if there's not enough room for people.
It won't, not for the annual.
So the three locations, one of them's already ruled out.
Mm-hmm.
The next location would be the Triton High School, which I would expect would also give you much better audio, certainly probably be large enough to hold the crowd. The real, one of the questions here is elevation. If, if it's important that you hold the crowd, and that is important, in comfort, I think it's probably a sloped auditorium. And the audio is very important, because if people can't understand conversations and the background noise be so, so great, you lose huge amount of communication skills in what's happening. So if you provide them a great venue, I think the, the visual aspect of being elevated, that only applies to people in the front rows, and by the time you get to the middle of the auditorium, you're at the same eye level. By the time you get to the back of the auditorium, the people in the audience are looking down the board. So it seems to me, the lighting, the acoustics, that appears to be the best venue. That's in my opinion. The second thing is the time, what day of the week? Saturday was brought up. It's a day you know most people have more flexibility than a day through the week. And secondly, if you did it at ten in room time, then it's daytime, it's daylight hours. Which certain people would prefer? And if it meant setting some buses up at the daytime to bring people to Triton or the elderly, you'd, you'd try to accommodate it. So, it seemed to me the, the decision-making process would be, where is the best place for the town to hold a meeting? And try to overcome some problems that may not really be problems, but just be perceived to be problems. That's my comments. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. We're okay with this now, for at least this year? What's really not written into old business, but is gonna be part of old business tonight too, because we all have wondered what we were going to do and how we were gonna move forward with the Plum Island Committee. And obviously, some of the time, you know, the clock's ticking. So, we've kind of thought, I talked to Tracy today, and this is open for the thinking of the board. It's not cast in stone. If someone comes up with an illuminary idea that is much better than the idea that is in place right now, we certainly can go to that. But I've been having angst over how to vet seventeen letters in a public forum, let's say, and discuss who we were gonna choose to be on the committee. Not only for length, but also for even privacy reasons, it just was hot. So, we thought about maybe doing something like, each person, send our assistant, uh, administrative assistant Ellen, their top five choices they would like on the committee ranked from one to five. That will certainly give us the ability, because of taking the top numbers that happen to coincide, to be able to choose five people. Those top five people that are chosen, whether Damon, Damon had a thought about maybe an alternate? And, you know, what went into this was a way to try to get, and I don't know if we can, I mean, I had the thoughts of trying to get someone from Northern Boulevard, someone from Southern Boulevard, trying to get a business. But, you know, it just didn't seem to become that easy to, to, uh, to do. We thought of maybe sending the five choices, and of those five choices, if for some reason Pitta and someone from the Plum Island Foundation weren't on that, maybe we could consider putting them on as alternates or add them to the number, because they seem to be part of the committee. But that doesn't mean that's cast in stone, either, we can just stand, stand with the five choices. Uh, John, you wanted to be on that committee, right?
Probably more than half.
And I mean, probably sit as a non-voting member. Uh, we're gonna have, probably myself will be on there, 'cause I have the most knowledge, although you have a lot of knowledge. And maybe one other selectman, I don't need to vote, but at least maybe the other selectman can be a voting member. Martha, you were gonna be on that, you know, as part of that committee. So.
But you needed one more thing to do.
Yeah. And Tracy said she was gonna partake in it too, just because of the fluidity of understanding of the things that get lost by the time they get filtered out to our board in a report fashion. So, that's kind of a way of fleshing out our going forward with the committee, and that's just a thought.
Okay.
I like your idea. Submit the top five you want to each one of us. I like that idea.
And it's up to you guys.
Can I speak?
Sure.
My thought was, um, by looking through all these letters that we had, and we did have a lot, and thanked everyone who, who, um, submitted a letter, 'cause I'm appreciative of your willingness to serve.
and thanked everyone who, who, um, submitted a letter, 'cause I'm appreciative of your willingness to serve. But the island has so many, it's a multifaceted problem down there, that I would like to see this committee, um, served with people with institutional knowledge and life experience in planning and town planning and working with governments and, um, some kind of a background. That's one, one way I'd like to see it. Another way I'd like to see it is I'd like to see someone that doesn't have a voice on another committee, because I'd like to see, for lack of a better word, new blood that has some skin in the game, that does not already, has a voice someplace else. I'd like to see, uh, I'd like to see some, a committee that, um, for lack of a better word, that can look beyond their own front door and look more for a broad approach and look from the town's perspective, because they are part of the town of Newbury, it is part of the town of Newbury. Um, the issues are unique to, um, the island, but, um, and I'd like to get this committee that could actually work together and be cohesive and come up with solutions for us. That's my two cents.
And I think, at least for myself, you said exactly probably how I would put together my choices.
Yeah, I, I'm not doing it by location, by street or all that other stuff.
Well, I'm just saying, but I would be part of how I would do my choices.
Yeah.
And the, um, other ramifications would be it would have a definite start time, a definite end time.
And another thing too is we need to.
And it would have a public hearing.
Yeah, now, the, I was looking at this, this.
And the charge.
This, um, when we give them a charge, I want, I don't know how we can do this or if it's already been done, but I would like to see definite goals and, um, um, timelines and measur- measurable, solutions. Something that's actually a measurable solution. And, and I'd like to find out, I think we as a board need to charge this committee with how it determines success. I would like to know what the outcome is of this committee before it starts. Because I think if you see where you wanna end, you can get there a lot better than if you don't know where you're going. So, I think, you know, measurable goals, we can just come up with what those are, but.
Well, Jeff and Tracy on board, you're gonna have that.
Yeah, but I'd like to know what they are.
A lot of that too, Chuck, is gonna be who the committee chooses for, for chair. And I think, I mean, if we're, I mean, you've got a good point. I certainly don't wanna overburden the committee with your thoughts. Or mine, or Damon's, or Jay's, or Chuck's.
But what, what do we as a board, how do we determine a successful outcome?
Well, I think the two major things we're tasking them with right now, let them deal with that and we can expand the committee further.
Well, see, this.
How do we know that they've succeeded at what we've asked them to do?
But this is advisory, Alicia. And it is gonna include trash, facilities for the public, parking, streetlights, and other concerns that have been raised by residents. But it's also not gonna concern, you know, are the jetties a good thing or a bad thing?
No.
Can Concon make a good decision, is DEP my friend?
Well, that's, that's outside of the scope.
Right, so.
But my, so my point is, with this scope, how do we, how do we measure a successful? What is, what would a successful outcome be of, um, ongoing issues at Plum Island Center surrounding the area related to trash facilities for the public, parking, streetlights, and other concerns? Well, we, we have to define what the other concerns are.
Before.
I don't wanna set this committee up to fail, that's my biggest thing.
But I mean, let me ask you a question. Are you expecting the committee to make the decision for you?
No.
Are they advising us for what we expect to make a good decision?
That's it.
Because.
So what do you need?
It, it's, it's, it's not as easy, I mean, it's hard to tell a committee what you expect of them before you put the committee together.
But you know what you need.
We charge them with, with those things that we need.
Yes.
We, we would like answers, but.
I think the metrics are in the charge. We want them to hold at least one open public meeting. I think they should hold three.
Me too.
I think a couple at least, sure.
Yeah.
Maybe in some different places too.
I think they should all be held in public. I think they should all be held in public. Why, why are they not?
Not just Plum Island.
Public hearing is what.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I misspoke there. And we want them to solicit information and make a recommendation about how to deal with these issues. And we've laid out the issues that we want them to look at. So we've made, I feel like we made it very clear what we want from them. We want them to look at these problems and rather than taking them piecemeal, which is how we've, they've been brought to us and we've dealt with them in the past, look at the whole issue going on in Plum Island and the different pieces. From the parking issue and the parking restrictions that have been changed now, to how the trash is dealt with, to how the public facilities for human waste is dealt with at Center Island. You know, these are, there's a whole complex sort of ecosystem of how people interact with the island, and we're asking them to look at it as a whole. As opposed to someone comes in and says, there's a couch, it's a health issue, you have to deal with it right now. So instead of us dealing with, you know, whack-a-mole for every problem that comes up and not getting a good solution, we've asked them, look at these problems and come up with your advice for us.
Okay, so how do we know as a board?
Because when they bring their recommendations to us here for us to implement, that's when we'll know.
And we're also, two of us are gonna be acting with the committee. So we won't be voting members necessarily, but we'll be there to.
So what you're saying, if I understand you correctly, is that you, you think that this committee should set up its own goals and it shouldn't come from us?
No, that we've given them a charge, that we voted on it. It's right there in front of you. Find the solutions to these problems, that's what we told them to do. Make a recommendation, that's their job. Recommend to us, after gathering information from the residents of the town, what the best solutions to these problems are in a fashion that addresses them all, not just one at a time. That's what the charge is. I mean, what do you want beyond that?
Well, I think a lot of what Alicia said with how we choose our people could get exactly what you want. I mean, if you, although it might be hard for people that don't really know all those people either. I mean, but I mean, I look at some of the people on this, and I know my choices are gonna be put into the arena of choosing along the lines of what you said and choosing along the lines of what you said before I left, that those people will work in a consolidated fashion to solve some of the issues before then. I'm not gonna try to choose an iconoclast and put him in the committee just so he can be, um, bringing up things that aren't relevant and pertinent. We're gonna try to choose decision-makers. I would also like, and, and Alicia did say it, I would also like to maybe, I mean, it'd be, if you look at everyone that's involved in government, it would be nice to get a couple of the young, I mean, the older gentleman that came in and discussed, they came all the way in to introduce themselves to us tonight, that they are one of the, or two of the people that are on this, so we could put a face, you know, 'cause that's part of the issue. You might not know all these people.
I think what I'm trying to say is that, is that, yes, we have, they have a charge here, but how do we as a town know that we've achieved what we've asked them to, to, to achieve? Is it there, this significant less litter on Plum Island? Is it significantly, um, the dog, throwing the dog poop issue, um, um?
But that's not their job. Their job is not solve these problems.
Right, that's what I.
Bring us a recommendation. So if they show up with a.
Bring us an advisory recommendation from their committee so that we can make a decision. And that decision might not work, we might have to look at it again.
Okay.
Jen, no, you don't, go ahead, you can yell.
I guess I'm wondering, you said there were seventeen letters?
I believe that, is it seventeen, Ellen? Seventeen, yes.
And I, and you're saying you might, some people might not know everybody?
Yep.
So you're, you're just gonna base it on a letter, you're not gonna have them come in and talk to you?
Well, the problem is, and that's food for thought too, and we could. I'm hoping that at least the board, at least for me, recognizes five people that they have faith in moving this forward. So, and I don't, I don't know if that, I don't, I don't know if that's true. I mean, I recognize basically everyone.
Yeah, same here.
So, and I don't, you know, so.
And you guys feel like you recognize everybody?
Most of them, yes.
Not me.
Yeah. So then if it didn't happen that the five lined up the way you were hoping or close enough, then you might consider bringing people in, is that what you?
You know what, it might not line up the way we want it to.
Yeah.
And I mean, that's, that's kind of.
So this is a fresh step, see what happens?
Well, I, I kinda thought, and, and I'm open, guys. And we can bring them all in, so. But I thought the fact of way we were doing it might not be overthinking it. Because sometimes if you overthink it, you get the guys that are classic and you don't get the guys that, some of the people that are not always going along potty lines.
Right.
So, yeah, come on up.
Um, one of the things that I would just, there was a trigger there when you were talking about who you were putting on and saying someone from Plum Island Foundation or from Pitta. I think they represent a specific point of view.
Oh, yeah.
And I think that's not a good idea.
Yep.
I think what happens is people already have predetermined ideas about either what they believe or what they don't believe, and that that will affect the process. If they believe that everyone who's on it comes with sort of a global vision, an intent to work as a committee without representing a previous stance or a already stated stance and a point of view, it would be more widely accepted by everyone.
And I think that's a good point. I guess what.
That was your point.
I guess what I meant by that is.
Versus, yeah.
The five people that we choose, if the, if this was just visioning, if there wasn't someone from several of the groups that have been established down there, maybe they should be able to, but then we could have public hearing, so they're gonna come anyway, so.
Yeah.
What's the Plum Island Beautification Society, is that what it is? I never heard, I don't know what they do. Nobody know?
It isn't succeeding.
No, it is, they're working, I mean, that young lady that came before and discussed with us was, was good.
I'm just teasing you, kid, that's all. Mr. Chairman.
If I could comment, I think on what Alicia said, I'm very supportive of that on setting up a timeline, scope of work and determine. To me, that's affected by how the board of selectmen tell the committee what their responsibility is. You tell them we're expecting A, B, C out of you, we're expecting you to do it in six months, we want you to report back to us monthly, and it's, it's, if you define to them what their charge is clearly in writing, everything you've said here tonight, you're gonna get.
That was my point.
Either, either you're gonna get it, or you're gonna find out it's not happening and things are falling apart.
Right.
It tells you a story in a very timely fashion.
Yep.
That was my point.
Yep.
Thank you. And should we have a committee that does not work well? It's an appointed committee and we can remove people. You know, if we inadvertently put someone on who is a megalomaniac and wants to run everything and doesn't let anyone speak, we just remove them. It's, you know, we have, we are not giving these people a lot of time before the April town meeting. We need, I, the only change to what.
Basically, basically, it's gonna be January twelfth to modulatory first.
Yeah, I would even advocate for moving it, rather than having our recommendations in on the twelfth. You know, we have two weeks, we could do it before our next meeting.
Yeah, I would like to see it.
Feel comfortable with reading the letters and making a recommendation before then.
Yeah.
You'd have to have your recommendations in by next Wednesday, because they have to go on the agenda and they have to be appointed. If you wanted to do the next meeting, they'd have to be, you have to have them in the Wednesday.
I was prepared for this meeting, so. But I don't know if other people have the time, I know it is the holidays, so.
So what timeframe are you looking at, Damon?
I was ready for next meeting, which Ellen says would mean.
Which is the twenty-second.
Our recommendations would have to be in.
Next Wednesday, by next Wednesday.
Which gives us a week, a week from, from tomorrow.
Yep.
Okay, does anybody have a problem with that? I don't have a problem with that.
I don't.
Do you have a problem with that?
I don't have time to.
I do not.
Okay.
I can do that.
If we can get this aboard, board appointed, but at our next meeting, then they can hit the ground running. Then on the twelfth, we can get them all in here and we can give them a charge. Ba-da-bing.
But I, I'm a little lost, that's what we said we were gonna do.
Yeah, we're not gonna be done by March.
But I mean, that's, what did we say that was different?
I thought you wanted the letters by January sixth, I'm saying.
No.
Okay.
By the twenty-second.
Okay. I misread what you said.
And then they would be all sorted by the twenty-second. We would know who was there. We could either appoint them on the twenty-second or we could appoint them on, on the July twelfth, I mean, excuse me, to, to January twelfth.
So we're really only giving them three months, January, February, March?
Because we're gonna try to make recommendations by annual town meeting.
It has to go on the annual town meeting.
Through the warrant process. And we gotta, we gotta do something for summer.
Oh, for, for the summer.
Yes, we're trying to have a solution for next year.
I mean, we're gonna have to make a, we gotta make a solution, we don't wanna do it without input.
And we, if it costs money, we need to go to town meeting.
And I mean, my fear is.
Minor detail, money.
I don't think the board needs to look at them making your decisions for you. Any information that we have beyond what we have now would be a help. That's why they're put in place as an advisory committee. Sometimes committees can try to make the selectmen's decisions and that sometimes becomes dangerous.
So, should we make a motion to submit everything, or do we just do this, we need not need to move it?
No, the idea that we had spoken with, and it's my fault for not being sharp tonight, with Ellen was that we would get all the letters in, they would be vetted, excuse me, all the choices in, they would be vetted by the next meeting and we would know the makeup of the committee.
Yep.
And we would discuss the makeup of the committee, I'm sorry I didn't illuminate this, at the twenty-second meeting to see if we thought the makeup of that committee was what we felt was workable? And did we wanna do anything beyond what we had in place at that point?
And then we'll actually appoint on the twelfth.
On the twelfth. And that, and I, I guess I didn't say that, and I'm sorry.
That makes sense to me.
But why not just appoint on the twenty-second?
Huh?
Why not appoint on the twenty-second so they?
Well, I think we need to call them in and have the committee here so we can give them a charge. I mean, I know you think the charge is here, but I think we need to be a little more specific.
Well, I mean, Alicia, the charge might not have to be here, but the charge can certainly be here by the twenty-second or the twelfth.
No, what I'm saying is we, we, we email Ellen all of our choices this week, so we can get on the agenda. So next week, we can discuss how we form the committee. Then we form our committee, hopefully by the end of that, that meeting. Then Ellen goes back and she emails the people and says, you've been picked on the committee, please come to the board of selectmen's meeting on January twelfth, so we can discuss this committee. And then they can hit the ground running.
But each one of us can be working on our idea of what we consider to be a charge.
Or a success, yeah.
And that charge or whatever we, our success, we can certainly put together in a discussion on the twenty-second, and it can be in writing.
Yeah, I think the twenty-second, our, our twenty-second meeting is gonna, this is gonna take up most of it.
It's fine.
I just wanna make sure I'm understanding what you're saying, and I think I do. Each of you will individually send your recommendations to Ellen. You're not gonna be discussing those recommendations by email, you're not gonna know what you recommend.
No.
It's all individual.
I sure hope not.
Then you're gonna come back and you're gonna hope that they match up closely enough that you have the five member committee.
We're gonna talk about it then.
And that's when you'll talk about it, if it doesn't match up, then you come up with another.
We have to come up with the five committee.
We're surmising the fact that there will be some people that at least choose two people and it goes to.
Comment.
Put it together to the five.
Right.
How many alternates does the planning board have?
Um, we have one associate member.
Now, what would this committee need to vote on? They would need to vote any? Now, what would this committee need to vote on? They would need to vote on anything?
Let me speak to Damon's real quick. That's kinda why we have five members there, too, and it is a committee. You know, one person could miss, you know.
Yep.
You know, but if, if everyone wants an alternate, that's easy to do, too, 'cause that would work out.
This is like an advisory group, it's like an advisory group, it's really not, they don't have to vote on anything.
Yeah, but it'll, it'll be just like NBC, they're gonna have.
They'll vote on a recommendation.
Yeah.
They give us his advice.
Okay.
They'll make a vote. There'll be, there'll be a chair, there'll be a treasurer, there'll be a secretary, and another treasurer, go ahead.
From my perspective, and, and again, just hearing how the, this committee, how you're, you're envisioning it is made up. It sounds to me, you know, this is, this is a, this is for Plum Island, but it's for all of Newbury.
Mm-hmm.
And it sounds to me like the committee that you're suggesting is very administrative heavy and not, doesn't have enough citizens on it. You're talking about two councilmen, city administrator, town administrator, who isn't, who isn't a resident.
They're not voting, they're not voting.
So you're only gonna have five people to vote?
And maybe one selectman.
Okay. Is, it, it's a little bit like you bring a lot of the administration and sit them down at a table with some citizens, do you think that they may feel intimidated by that?
I sure hope they don't, 'cause a lot of times they don't know all the answers and they might wanna ask one of us.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's important.
Martha, especially as town planner, and, and, you know, and maybe John, you know, maybe they need questions answered.
And the concern is, for me, is if the, if they're not, if the, they're not at, on this committee, then this, this date will, the thirty, the amendment march is the, will approach quickly, we'll get nothing.
As long as they're not voting members and they can't intimidate by their vote, that's, that's different, I didn't, didn't realize that.
No, they weren't meant to be, no.
Okay, because there are a lot of sensitive issues out there, you've, you've mentioned.
Makes sense on the point that you're going to have a lot less phone calls, a lot less table meetings to go talk with the town administrator, go talk with the chairman of the board.
Can we really do that?
If they're right there, they can advise you, the, yes, you can do this, ah, no, 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 this rule says you can't do that. That is the beauty of it.
As long as everybody can come to the table with an open mind and no prior agenda.
Right.
Because there are those out there, the athleins.
No.
Okay, so.
Not you, Barry.
So it doesn't make any difference, but I'm just, you know, let's start with a clean piece of paper, because there's been a lot of things that have come up out on Plum Island.
Yep.
That people have pushed.
Yep.
And it may be the right thing, or it may not be, but let's start with a clean sheet of paper.
Yep.
To be honest with you, just so, I don't want you to be disillusioned. Maybe two or three of the people here haven't been involved in some issues on Plum Island.
All right.
So there are some presuppositions already in just the seventeen we have to choose from.
Oh, I understand that, but again, the charge can be, you come with, you come with a clean, clean slate, let's start all over again, that's all.
All right, so to recap, we have our five choices in by Wednesday next, okay?
We have homework.
And then we go from there, okay? Correct? Okay, can we move along?
To, to Ellen.
Can we move along?
To Ellen.
Sir, Mr. Chairman, I have to be in Quincy at sex tomorrow morning.
Oh, my God, that's my God, Alan.
Gotta leave now.
Then I, we have a letter, you wanna read it, Chuck, 'cause it's a lot about what you do.
Oh, goodness gracious. This is a correspondence, it is from Barry Cornell, Woodland Street, Newburyport, is addressed to Jeff Walker, Chairman, Town, uh, Newbury Board of Selectmen. Dear Chairman Walker, I am writing to offer my thanks for road improvements done by the town of Newbury in the past year. As an avid cyclist and nearby resident, I spend many hours traversing the roads of the Lower Merrimack Valley. Since most of those hours are spent perched on a thinly padded bike seat, certain parts of my anatomy are particularly insensitive to the quality of the road's surface. I am therefore able to offer expert testimony to the relative quality of the roads in our region. And I'm happy to report the extensive repaving of Newbury's roads has made my chosen form of exercise far more comfortable.
That nice.
This admission is particularly galling to me, a Newbury City Council, Newburyport City Councilor. Some of Newburyport's roads, such as Hale Street, are the worst in the region. All communities have to allocate limited funds on a wide variety of facilities and services. Your commitment to improving your roads is a prudent investment in infrastructure that we should all emulate. You've made Newbury a better place to ride and drive, thank you. And with that, I really would like to thank our Highway Department and Tracy Blaze, who was not here, because she has pushed to get all of those done outside.
And she's not feeling that great, so. So I'm glad we made someone happy, anyway.
Yeah. Even if they don't live here, not one of our residents, but.
I've heard a lot of good comments about the way things are done, and the Highway Department has really outdone themselves this year.
They did a nice job with the shoulders, 'cause, you know, everything got built up.
Yep.
And they took a lot of time, and it wasn't easy.
Beating the old roads into the new, they, they spent a lot of time on that.
Right, let's do the minutes.
Do you have minutes? Damon, you weren't at these, those minutes?
Uh, at least.
The first one?
No, he wasn't.
I was not at.
All right, so everyone else, take a look at them?
Yeah.
I did, I will approve, make a motion to approve the November ten minutes.
Can I have someone else say a second? Any other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And there was only three of us at the November twenty-fourth.
Correct, motion to approve the November twenty-fourth meeting minutes.
And then you have a second from you?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion from the three of us? So hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Warrants, do we have a vote? Do we have to sign warrants tonight?
Motion to sign warrants?
Sorry.
Actually, can I just, I, I had never discussed what we, my, my feedback from my.
Let me get your meeting updates, is this a meeting?
Yeah, sorry, 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 sorry.
All right, good, I wasn't gonna leave it. Warrants, motion, to sign warrants?
Motion, they have a second, vote?
Yep, do we have a second?
Chuck a second.
Okay.
Wait, wait, wait.
I moved, Chuck seconded.
Any discussion, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Meeting updates.
So we had about a dozen people come, show up at my coffee with the selectmen. And there's a couple of issues that came up, and I was hoping the town administrator was gonna be here, but she's not here to help answer some of them, but I can bring them up at the next meeting. The betterment, and maybe Jeff, you can answer this question, the betterment that is paid on Plum Island, does, does that money go to just pay down the debt?
That's a complicated question, and I think it does, but there is room for other things to be used by, what was the relevance in the question?
She, somebody had said that they had, they had seen a Board of Selectmen's meeting back in February, and that they was, comment made that there was betterment, the money, that was their understanding that the betterment goes to pay down the debt, but there was some other monies that was allocated elsewhere, so I said, I'll ask.
Yes, there was roads allocation on some of the betterments.
It's complicated.
What else was this? Yeah, it is, it goes on and on, yeah, but the betterment, it covers a huge amount.
Okay, so.
If I remember it, and I'm going back to old school when we signed the things.
Yeah, so. So we might need clarification on that.
It wasn't a bad thing that you couldn't maybe answer that question totally, it's a complicated, it's a complicated question.
Right, I could never answer that question, right. Okay, so the next thing there was, there was a couple of residents that live across the street here, the geese in the pond, they're making a mess. So they wanted to know if there was possible if the town could get swans, they could have swans.
That's, that's a cool thought, the swans displace the geese.
Yeah.
Swans can be aggressive.
They're very aggressive.
That, yeah, we.
Ken?
They are.
Huh.
What about the coyotes?
A wolverine, did you say a wolverine?
That works for like.
The coyotes didn't work, they made shot out of the coyotes, so.
So.
I got some coyotes that they could have.
Another thing is the Christmas tree, and I didn't notice it on my way in, and I do apologize, the Christmas tree is leaning, he said, to one side. I don't know if we could possibly have the, um, the fire department or the town straighten it up. Um, this corner of State.
Leaning left or leaning right, I mean, we better get this squared away.
The State Street and Parker Street.
I forgot, so, that, that tree is in a stand?
I don't know.
I don't know.
That, that's, that's growing there, and it's like a question mark, right?
I thought that was my tree that I've looked at that's growing out of the ground for a few years.
It is growing out of the ground?
I mean, I thought.
It's just a, it's, I don't know the story behind the tree, so I don't wanna insult anyone, but it is a very interesting.
Yeah, but I mean.
Christmas tree.
I do not believe.
It's not the one you pick on the lot.
I, but that Christmas tree is growing.
Yes.
It's not in a.
No, it's not in a stand.
And it's growing like a question mark.
Yeah, I know.
All right, so that's why it's leaning, okay, very good.
It's drawing towards the side.
All right, so State Street and Parker Street, the corner is a dangerous corner, and can anything be done about, about that corner? Now, I don't know, and Parker Street, when you come out where the.
That's not our town.
You know what I'm talking about.
She's dead on, she's dead on, that's dead on.
Yeah, so they were, I don't know if Merrimack Planning Commission has looked at that streets, I'm not sure.
You know, it's Newburyport, so it's really.
Yeah, it's not our town.
You know, it's, it's a question of.
You know, the Board of Selectmen can, can write a letter though.
It's a Newburyport, right.
Newburyport saying that they've had numerous complaints, but we should probably wait for more numerous complaints than one, was there one?
That's the only one I got.
That issue specifically was site distance.
Yeah.
Oh, it's bad, it's terrible.
And I agree with you, it's all, it's a letter to the report.
It's terrible.
Right.
Do we have a problem with writing a letter? I mean, I know that to be terrible.
I don't, it's, it's an issue.
You don't mind a set of lights going up, go ahead, complain.
Set of lights.
Set of lights on Route, on Route one wouldn't be bad, and then there's, there's, but maybe we could ask the, the, they could ask just to get the Enterprise Rent-A-Car to move the cars, so you can see that.
No, what it, what it is, is I don't believe that the rent-a-car place had the ability, because it was lawn when that place was built, can people remember that?
Yeah.
It was laid in artificial lawn, and now it's stone, right? So I don't believe Newburyport actually gave them permission in the site planning to park cars all the way out to the road.
I don't think so either, 'cause it used to be duck and donuts, you could drive through.
So I think if the board would choose to make a motion, we could draft a letter, explain, expressing concern for site distance and other things, we'll get maybe more appropriate wording, and we could send it to the mayor.
I move that the Board of Selectmen draft a letter to the mayor of Newburyport with our concerns over the State Street and, Street and Parker Street corner.
Yep, and it's just expressing concern.
I second.
Any discussion, guys? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, great.
And maybe, Ellen, when you do it, I don't know if it would be Martha James or someone, if there's terms or, for, you know, site distance and things, so we use the right term.
Well, Martha.
So, um.
She deals with it from the other stuff.
There's been a concern about, they wish, and everybody, I'm sure I've heard this before, that town needs to be, communicate better, improved, a need for improved communications with the town, between the town and its residents. Go on and on about that discussion, I'd like to see a nu, a newsletter go out. Um, the Plum Island, the folks on Plum Island got a questionnaire on emergency contact information.
That was from Newburyport.
Yeah, but, you know, there's a contact list there, we can start, bing, we have email addresses, bing, email.
My answer to the improved communication is, what did the media committee, we, we put, charged them with that? We, it's on TV, how much more can we do?
Oh, you can communicate better. Yeah, the me, the media committee can, they, they are charged with it, and they are looking at, we're gonna have conversation with the web, web design, 'cause the website is very, is not very user-friendly, the website needs to be updated.
Did you have a chance to ask them what their solution was?
We have a meeting tomorrow night.
No, no, the people that were asking that question for more communication, 'cause it's hard for us to all.
Email, 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 email is the number one choice, communication.
Email to who?
You guys have any input? You guys were there, what were they saying? Were they talking about mostly emailing, right?
That if people could sign up for an email alert system, many towns have that for upcoming meetings in the next week or two weeks. It's just, it's just a courtesy that flows by the means.
Well, that system the town presently has in effect, but it's not working.
Right.
You're aware of that, right?
That's on here, too.
Yes.
And it, and it, as to what Alicia was saying, that's, and you subscribe to news on the website. This system, and I, just as of yesterday, I talked with Susan. And she realizes the problem, and she thinks in the next few weeks through IT that she can get it resolved. I brought it to her because I tried using the systems into the summer, and again, I tried a few weeks ago, so that's why I went to.
So people that would like these alerts would send their email address to?
And here's, here's a list of the alerts, you can get news, town news and events, job opportunities, council on aging, and then a general from the Selectmen, Conservation, Finance, Planning, Board of Health, DPW, Personal Board, and the NBC. If, if this was working, then the, the need, all this would be available to people by email, all they'd have to do is sign up for it.
Sign up for.
It's a click it, it's a very simple sign up. Without it working, it's very frustrating.
I think that's cool.
It is, it's a great system, and it's, it's, it solves, I think, just what you're talking about.
So let's, let's work towards trying to get it.
And another, but the dovetail, yeah, to with that.
The second part of what we're talking about is communications, is I found that the, the meeting minutes on the vast majority of the town's boards and committees and commissions are way behind. I, I went through thirteen meeting minutes through electronically on your website, and I found that, I, I discarded a few, and Ellen was gracious enough to update me this morning, or just, excuse me, just before the tonight's meeting, that the, just today, the Board of Selectmen's notes are posted as of today, prior to that, they were months behind.
Yes, they were.
Now, the, beyond that, though, there's an average of, of the ten boards that you have out there, they're five months behind in posting their meeting minutes. If, in fact, meeting minutes are important to you and the committees and to the townspeople, they're not being made available electronically, which again, is the single best way to get the information out there.
Once, once the committee approves the minutes, they should automatically get uploaded, I don't know.
So you understand, that's an average of five months, some are ten months delinquent in posting, and it need not. There may be hot copies in the office somewhere, but for your expectations for the townspeople to come down and get copies of minutes is outrageous, it, it just can't be done, plus the cost of printing them is, is, gets crazy. So I think you should advocate to your commissions that they get current, get them posted, okay, and I've talked to Martha, Martha's working towards the same end, but it's a bear to keep things current, but how important it is to you. If your overall criticisms I hear month after month of poor communications, here's a, here's a very easy way just to solve a lot of that poor communications. I've read meeting minutes, they're excellent. Your special town meeting notes were excellent, I believe Lindsey did those back in October. As of the last time I opened them, they're still in the draft stage. So I know they've been approved, and though I commented on a change, but you've got two, two very powerful systems available and in place, and if you start to use them, you should be able to alleviate a lot of the concerns, legitimate concerns that the people have.
And the last thing that was brought up was, um.
I, I, excuse me, but I can't carry today a letter to the board to this effect, and I know I'm a little out of order, but it's there in black and white, and if you wanna talk to about it in detail.
I have to say this, and I understand that. I think no one is trying not to have, for lack of communication issues, the minutes current. I think everyone is probably working at a very high level, and I think probably making, you know, talking to Tracy and trying to streamline the, the ways that this might occur is advantageous. But it's certainly not that we're not trying to communicate, and especially when, if someone is that relevant and wants the minutes of a meeting, they can go on the town website and watch the meeting.
If I may, Jeff, I talked with Susan about this.
Is it, is it Susan, or is it the rest of the folks can't get everything?
Well, it's a, there's a, a system change that's going to be happening in place for the first of the year.
Yeah, it takes time.
And right now, all of the many minutes have to be updated essentially through her, and she's been unable to keep up with the work of it.
Get it, get it all done, yeah.
But that system is changing, hopefully will be fully in place by the first of the year, and then each committee will have the ability to upload their own meeting minutes.
Good, good.
And so hopefully, with the new system, this problem will be addressed.
'Cause Susan has to do everything for the ConCon and try to accomplish that, too, so we're gonna have the ability, Damon, for a designated person in each committee to upload their own. So we're gonna have the ability, Damon, for a designated person in each committee to upload their own minutes. Makes good sense.
So there's a solution. And the other thing was that, um, some residents found the police presence, and I'm glad, well, John's not here. The police presence at, um, town meeting intimidating. Um, especially when we're voting on a police station. So I'll just leave you all with that thought, and you can think about maybe, next week, we can talk about possibly asking, when we go to vote, asking the police to leave the building, I mean, leave the room till we vote.